I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. This is the first of two public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for renewal leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Christina DeRose.
Present.
Robert Erlich.
Present.
Sheila Garcia.
Present.
Christian Gonzalez Rivera.
Present.
Leah Goodridge, she's running late. Cecilia Josa, running late. Alex Schwartz.
Present.
Scott Walsh.
Present.
And David Reese, present. Let the record show that we have a quorum. The next meeting of this board will be a public hearing this Thursday, June 17th. This will be our last public hearing to comment on the proposed guidelines. The hearing will take place on Zoom from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and the details for attending the hearing can be found in the meeting schedule on our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or by calling 212-669-7480 between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. We will also be taking comments on the proposed guidelines outside of our public hearings. This testimony must be submitted no later than this Thursday, June 17th. You can find information on submitting testimony on our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or you can leave audio testimony by calling 929-256-5472. The final vote will take place virtually on Wednesday, June 23rd, starting at 7:00 p.m. The public may watch the vote by streaming it on the RGB's YouTube channel or by listening to it over the phone. To find out how, visit the RGB website, nyc.gov/rgb, or call the RGB at 212-669-7480 between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. I'd like to thank you for all attending this public hearing. The board is looking forward to hearing from many of you regarding the proposed rent adjustment guidelines. Before we proceed with testimony, I would like to go over the rules and procedures for those who are testifying before the board today. We will begin with speakers who registered in advance. We will alternate between tenants, owners, and public officials with a speaking limit of two minutes per person. If there is time at the end of the hearing, we will then hear from unregistered speakers on a first-come, first-served basis. We will explain how to do that after all registered speakers have spoken. When it is your turn to speak, a staff member will promote you from an attendee to a panelist, and you will have the ability to speak and display your video if you so choose. Please wait for your name to be announced before you commence your testimony. If you are attending the Zoom hearing with a name or phone number that differs from the name or phone number you registered with, we will not be able to identify you, and you may lose your place in the queue. If you are not an attendee of the hearing at the time your name is called, you will also lose your place in the queue. A two-minute timer will begin and will be displayed periodically during your testimony. At the conclusion of your testimony, you will become an attendee again without speaking privileges as we move on to our next speaker. There is a Spanish interpreter here today. To listen to testimony in Spanish, please use the interpretation button in Zoom to choose the appropriate channel. For English speakers, select the English channel to hear English speakers as well as Spanish speakers interpreted into English. If you do not choose an interpretation channel, you will hear all testimony in the native language of the speaker. If you are using the Zoom app on a smartphone, you may find the interpretation button by pressing the "more" button. If you would like to listen to a hearing with simultaneous interpretation in Spanish and do not have access to the Zoom app on either a mobile device or a computer, you may do so by calling 646-558-8656. That's 646-558-8656. Then entering meeting ID 86931307819. Again, that's meeting ID 86931307819. Then, when prompted for participant ID, pressing the pound sign. Then, when prompted, enter passcode 705009. Again, passcode 705009. If you are listening to the Spanish translation by telephone and plan to testify during the hearings, you will have to switch over to the main webinar to testify. Interpreters in the main hearing will translate your testimony for the board. Before it is your turn to speak, call 646-558-8656. Then enter meeting ID 83877223517. That's meeting ID 83877223517. When prompted for participant ID, pressing pound. Then, when prompted, enter passcode 403700. Passcode 403700. We expect many speakers, and the board wants to hear from as many speakers as possible in the limited time we have for this hearing. We understand that it may be difficult to say everything you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand that it is our responsibility to make sure that everyone who has taken the time to join us and testify will have a fair opportunity to be heard. We thank you for your cooperation.
Okay, in Spanish. Buenas tardes. Me gustaría darle la bienvenida a esta audiencia pública de la Junta de Normas de Alquiler de Nueva York. Esta es la primera de las dos audiencias públicas que toma en consideración sus comentarios sobre los ajustes del alquiler propuestos para la renovación de contratos de alquiler de apartamentos, los o altillos, hoteles y otras unidades de vivienda sujetos a la Ley de Estabilización de Alquileres del 1969 y la Ley de Urgencia de Protección de Inquilinos del 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán la renovación de contratos de alquiler a partir del 1 de octubre del 2021 hasta el 30 de septiembre del 2022. Ahora pasaré lista. Por favor, responda si está presente. Christina DeRose está presente. Robert Erlich está presente. Sheila Garcia, presente. Christian Gonzalez Rivera, presente. Leah Goodridge, no ha llegado. Cecilia Josa, no ha llegado. Alex Schwartz, presente. Scott Walsh, presente. David Reese, presente. Que consten actas que existen un quorum. La próxima reunión de esta junta será para otra audiencia pública este jueves 17 de junio. Esta será nuestra última audiencia pública para comentar sobre las normas propuestas. La audiencia se llevará a cabo por Zoom de 5:00 de la tarde hasta las 9:00 de la noche, y los detalles para asistir a la audiencia se pueden encontrar en el calendario de reuniones en nuestro sitio web, o al llamar al 212-669-7480 entre las 9:00 de la mañana y las 5:00 de la tarde. También tomaremos comentarios sobre las normas propuestas fuera del horario de nuestras audiencias públicas. Este testimonio debe presentarse a más tardar este jueves 17 de junio. Pueden encontrar datos sobre cómo presentar su testimonio en nuestro sitio web, o puede dejar un testimonio en audio al llamar al 929-256-5472. La votación final se llevará a cabo virtualmente el miércoles 23 de junio a partir de las 7:00 de la noche. El público puede ver la votación al sintonizar el canal de YouTube de RGB o al escuchar por teléfono. Para averiguar cómo, visite el sitio web de rgbnyc.gov/rgb o llame al RGB al 212-669-7480 entre las 9:00 la mañana y las 5:00 la tarde. Me gustaría agradecerles a todos por asistir a esta audiencia pública. La junta desea verdaderamente escuchar sus opiniones sobre los ajustes propuestos a las normas de alquiler. Antes de continuar con sus declaraciones, me gustaría repasar las reglas y procedimientos para los que desean declarar ante la junta. Empezaremos con oradores que se inscribieron por adelantado. Alternaremos entre inquilinos, propietarios, y funcionarios públicos, y cada persona dispondrá de dos minutos para declarar. Si hay tiempo al final de la audiencia, escucharemos a los oradores no inscritos por orden de llegada. Explicaremos cómo hacerlo después de que todos los oradores inscritos hayan hablado. Cuando sea su turno de hablar, un miembro del personal le promoverá de asistente a panelista, y podrá hablar y mostrar su video si así lo desea. Espere a que se anuncie su nombre antes de empezar con su testimonio. Si asiste a la audiencia de Zoom con un número, con un nombre o número telefónico diferente del nombre o número telefónico con el que se inscribió, no podremos identificarle, y es posible que pierda su lugar en la cola. Si no es asistente de la audiencia en el momento en que se llame su nombre, también perderá su lugar en la cola. Se usará un reloj para marcar los dos minutos, y se mostrará de vez en cuando durante su declaración. Una vez concluido su testimonio, dejará de ser panelista y volverá a ser participante, sin privilegios de hablar. Después pasaremos a nuestro próximo orador. Hoy contamos con intérpretes de español. Para escuchar el testimonio en español, use el botón de interpretación en Zoom para elegir el canal apropiado. Para hablantes de inglés, seleccione el canal en inglés para escuchar a los hablantes de inglés, así como los hablantes de español. También deben elegir los canales correspondientes. Si no elige un canal de interpretación, escuchará todo el testimonio en el idioma nativo del hablante. Si está utilizando la aplicación Zoom en un teléfono inteligente, puede encontrar el botón de interpretación presionando el botón "more" o "más". Si desea escuchar la audiencia con interpretación simultánea en español y no tiene acceso a la aplicación Zoom en su teléfono móvil o en una computadora, puede hacerlo al llamar al 646-558-8656. De nuevo, el número es 646-558-8656. Después, ingrese el número de identificación de la reunión, De nuevo, número de identificación de reunión, Cuando se le solicite el número de identificación de participante, presione el símbolo del número. Cuando se le solicite, ingrese la contraseña 705009. Si está escuchando la interpretación al español por teléfono y piensa durante las audiencias tendrá que pasar al seminario web principal para hacerlo, los intérpretes de la audiencia principal traducirán su testimonio para la junta. Antes de que sea su turno de hablar, llame al 646-558-8656. De nuevo, 646-558-8656. Luego, ingrese el número de identificación de la reunión, De nuevo, número de identificación de reunión, Cuando se le solicite el número de identificación de participante, presione el símbolo del número. Luego, cuando se le solicite, ingrese la contraseña 403700. De nuevo, 403700. Esperamos que haya muchos oradores, y la junta desea escuchar a tantos de ellos como sea posible en el tiempo limitado que tenemos para esta audiencia. Entendemos que puede ser difícil decir todo lo que desea que escuchemos en tan solo dos minutos. Sin embargo, le pedimos que comprenda que es nuestra responsabilidad asegurarnos que todos los que se hayan tomado el tiempo de acudir a esta audiencia hoy a declarar tengan una oportunidad de hacer oír sus voces. Les damos las gracias por su cooperación.
Thank you.
David, may I make one quick announcement?
Yes.
You had made the announcement, and people who registered got an email that your name in Zoom has to match the name that you registered with, otherwise we can't locate you. I just want to reiterate that there's a couple of people in attendance today that I think are pre-registered, but their names are incomplete. And you need to leave and come back in with the name that you registered with. Specifically, talking to an owner with the initials JW and an owner with the initials JC. You can just leave and come back in with the name that you used to register, which is your full name. And we're just trying to prevent Zoom bombing with that and making sure that we have the right person. Thank you.
Great. So I think we're gonna begin with testimony now. And I'm just seeing who's been promoted to be a panelist. And I see that we have Assembly Member Rosenthal who was here to testify. Welcome, Assembly Member.
Hi. Thank you. I just have to open my testimony, okay?
Sure, no worries.
Don't start, because I know you cut people off exactly two minutes.
We'll wait for you to start talking.
Thank you. Okay, one more second. Okay. Can you see me? No one else can see me, so it's...
I can see you, Assembly Member.
Okay. Okay. I guess I'll start now. Hello, everyone. I'm Assembly Member Lynda B. Rosenthal. I represent the Upper West Side and parts of Hell's Kitchen in Manhattan District 67. The COVID-19 pandemic sent shockwaves throughout the city. In a matter of weeks, thousands of businesses were ordered to close as the number of COVID-19 cases exploded exponentially. Hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers suddenly became unemployed, and the city was thrust into the worst economic crisis since the Great Depression. Residents were forced to file for unemployment insurance benefits, enroll in free food programs, food banks, and seek out rental and mortgage relief to save off eviction. Though New York is beginning a slow return to normalcy with bars, restaurants, Broadway, and others reopening, many New Yorkers, including those who live in rent-regulated apartments, are still grappling with the financial fallout of the pandemic. New Yorkers owe more than $1 billion in rental arrears. According to a recent survey conducted by the Furman Center, more than 2,000 households have accumulated an average of more than $10,000 in rental arrears since the start of the pandemic. With New York State's eviction moratorium set to expire in August, the end of August 2021, thousands of families who were once protected from eviction could lose their home this fall. A rent increase, especially one that would go into effect mere months after the moratorium expires, is a recipe for generating another public health crisis, a mass eviction and subsequent homelessness crisis. Now is not the time to raise rents on rent-regulated tenants, many of whom are struggling like never before to make ends meet and pay their rent. To be sure, some landlords, particularly small ones, are similarly struggling, but the ERAP program recently began accepting applicants.
Thank you, Assembly Member.
It will help eliminate rental arrears for some of the small landlords. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna make a comment. I failed to mention this earlier, but for those of you who would like to have captions, you can turn those on in Zoom, and that may be, make following a testimony a little bit easier. And I'm now looking for who's been promoted next to see who will be our next speaker. Just bear with me. Okay, I see Senator Jackson has joined us. Senator, welcome.
Well, thank you for having me. And good afternoon, members of the Rent Guidelines Board. My name is State Senator Robert Jackson, and I represent 13 miles of Manhattan, stretching from Marble Hill down to Chelsea. My district has the most rent-regulated apartments in the entire state of New York, and I am myself a rent-regulated tenant. The Rent Guidelines Board has reviewed reports and testimonials about what to do with rents during our second year in COVID-19 pandemic. But based on what I'm seeing and hearing in the community, rent rollback is appropriate. Understanding what the discussions are now, I strongly argue that a rent freeze, a 0% increase on one-year and two-year leases, is the least the Rent Guidelines Board can do to stop massive wave of evictions. Before COVID-19, New York was already in a housing crisis with over 50,000 non-payment petitions filed between July and November 2019 in New York City and over 92,000 homeless New Yorkers statewide. My office has received hundreds of calls and constituents who lost their jobs in March of 2020 and depleted any savings they had to try to keep up with the rent, but still they fell short. Landlords are scrambling, and I can't blame them, to get all the rent back from the $2.4 billion Emergency Rental Assistance Program that we approved in the state legislature. So they're going to be made whole. But our tenants' finances will still be in ruins, even for those who can finally receive some sort of compensation from the Excluded Workers Fund that we passed. A rent increase will result in eviction. Every eviction is a policy failure because housing is a human right. To consider increases up to 3% when New Yorkers are still rebuilding their lives instead of a rent freeze would be inhumane. I urge the Rent Guidelines Board. A rent freeze is the least that you can do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Senator. I believe our next testimony is from Ann G.
Thank you. Can you hear me now, right?
Yes, Ann.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Ann Greenberg. I'm a senior citizen living in Peter Cooper Village, and I'm on the board of the Stuyvesant Town Peter Cooper Village Tenants Association. This is my seventh year testifying, and today I honor a neighbor who did so regularly. Marietta Hawkes was a SCRE tenant with mobility issues, but she trekked every year to testify, not just for herself, but for those who couldn't. Sadly, Marietta was found dead in her apartment not long ago, and we feel the loss. My rent-stabilized community has 5,000 affordable and lottery apartments. The other 6,200 or so have high preferential rents. We have an estimated 2,000 to 3,000 vacancies. During COVID, families fled. Young professional roommates who lost an income or two had to move. Students stayed away. Our owner, Blackstone, was happy to warehouse apartments rather than make meaningful adjustments for struggling tenants. Now Blackstone is pleading poverty and deferring necessary maintenance. What does your own research tell you? NOI increased 2.9%, 14th time in 15 years. Impressive. So was 10.8% in 2014 and 9.6% in 2011. But some of my neighbors are just about holding on. For preferential renters, even a small percentage can be a meaningful dollar increase. There's a world of pain in this city, and it's not just at the lowest income levels. We were historically a middle-class community, but we've seen tenants lose their small business and leave the state. We've seen neighbors who wanted to stay be denied a more affordable apartment despite the vacancies. Owners can use the fat years to see them through the lean years. Tenants don't have that option. Rent increases are part of the rent forever. The city isn't back yet. Freeze the rent and keep us in our homes so we can contribute to the recovery. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann, and our condolences for Marietta.
I'm sorry?
Thank you, and our condolences about your neighbor and our testifier.
Wonderful person. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joseph Condon is our next speaker. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I am Joseph Condon, in-house counsel for Community Housing Improvement Program, better known as CHIP. We represent long-term community-based owners and managers of rent-stabilized properties throughout New York City. We are here tonight to ask you to follow the data. You are going to hear anecdotal stories from both owners and tenants that highlight significant hardships and injustices, but it is worthwhile to remember that those are usually unique situations. They do not represent the majority of the millions of tenants or the tens of thousands of owners in the rent-stabilized universe. This board is not really equipped to craft a housing solution specific to each building or to each tenant, and must really follow the universal data. If this board wanted to be creative, it could carve out different classes of housing that would be each subject to different increases, but it is an unfortunate reality that rents, especially very low rents, has to be increased in order to balance the housing ecosystem. The RGB data and reports called for an increase last year, and they call for an increase again this year, even after considering the economic impact on renters from COVID-19. It is also noteworthy to look at what has been happening in other regulated industries, such as water and utility providers. The New York City Water Board is increasing water rates by almost 3%. The main driver of that increase is operation and maintenance costs associated with the physical infrastructure of the system and physical improvements there, too. Because it costs more and more money to maintain physical structures as they get older, this holds true for the housing stock as well. And right now, rent increases for capital improvements, whether building-wide or apartment-specific, are as good as gone. It is up to this board to keep the housing stock in good condition, but that requires increasing operating revenue so that housing providers can invest back into the building. It behooves this board to take a measured approach to these needs, gradually allowing rents to increase over time rather than keeping them static and requiring several major increases in a row to address years of insufficient ones. Accordingly, based on the proposed range, we would support a 2% increase for a one-year and a 3% increase for a two-year. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Susan Steinberg. Welcome.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Susan, we can.
Okay. I'm not sure why my video isn't showing, but anyway, I'll proceed. I'm Susan Steinberg, president of the Stuyvesant Town Peter Cooper Village Tenants Association. Today, rather than focus on income and piec figures, I thought I would focus on the Rent Stabilization Association's longstanding warping of those figures in a misinformation campaign. For years, and most recently, in their comments on the preliminary rent guidelines for Order 53, the RSA has claimed that owners have been historically undercompensated as they manipulate data and facts and present a very misleading portrait of rent history. They claim that without a decent RGB increase, they will be unable to maintain their buildings. They wipe their tears with the piec, ignoring the RGB's own IE report showing steady income growth year after year. Each of the following points is amply supported in detail in my written submission. The RSA claims that last year the board froze rent levels once again despite staff data supporting a moderate rent increase. In fact, RGB staff repeatedly found steady growth in owner net operating income after adjusting for inflation. Two, the RSA claimed that average one-year guidelines between 2002 and 2013 was approximately 3.3%, while the average piec was 5.8%. In fact, the more reliable income and expense data shows costs rose by 5.1%, not 5.8% per year, and the rent rolls rose an average of 4.7% per year during this period using the RGB rent index. Finally, the RSA charged this year commensurate adjustments call for, at a minimum, a 2% increase on one-year leases. Perhaps the RSA can explain why. Another rent increase in the face of clear evidence that their operating income increased 52% since 1990. I refer you to the balance of my written submission. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Susan. Our next speaker is Nathan Fishman. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Nathan. Yes, we can. You're sideways, in case you care. You might want to turn around your camera.
Okay, hold one second. Sorry about that.
Now you're right side up.
Okay. You ready? Okay. Landlords are asking for a rent increase in order to simply keep the status quo. Whatever rent decrees that you grant will not go into landlord's pockets. Rather, it will be used to pay the expenses to maintain a quality home for the tenants. It will simply allow us to tread water. My name is Nathan Fishman. I manage rent-stabilized apartment houses in Uptown Manhattan and the Bronx. My tenants are hard-working, good people, and my relationship with my tenants is excellent. My tenants want to live in nice buildings where their heat is on, the hot water is plentiful, repairs are made, and they are proud of their home. They deserve that, and I'm sure that the members of this board would expect that from all landlords. That expectation is exactly why a rent increase is required, for without it, landlords will be unable to pay the bills to make all of this possible. My costs are skyrocketing. My insurance went up last year by about 10%. My gas, electric, and fuel costs have increased as New York City approved a Con Ed rate increase of 7% per year over a three-year period. Yes, 21%. My New York City property taxes, my largest expense, have increased even as property values and rents have plummeted. The Water Board has proposed a rate increase of a... The Water Board has proposed a rate increase of approximately 3%. The cost of buying raw materials has increased dramatically with soaring inflation, and my employees deserve a pay raise, maybe 2% to 3%. Isn't that reasonable and expected? Then we have many, many unfunded government mandates that are not even reflected in the board's PIOC. With the passage of the 2019 state rent laws, your job has become much more important. You will make the decision of whether my tenants deserve a quality place to live. Yes, you. You are the only place, the only mechanism, that rent-stabilized landlords can get a reasonable rent increase, not on vacancies and not for apartment improvements. I'm stuck. I can only rely on you to help me make this work. If my expenses continue to go up and my rents do not keep in line, then I'll have no choice but to provide more neglected housing. That is the choice that you will leave me with, and I think that my tenants do not deserve. Over time, private housing will begin to resemble public housing, underfunded and falling apart, lack of heat, hot water, and proper service. So I'm asking you today to do the right thing for this city. The buildings that I manage are very old and need TLC. My tenants want their buildings to stay well-kept and understand that small, reasonable rent decreases are necessary to do that. Please vote for a reasonable rent decrease for myself and to benefit my tenants.
Thank you, Nathan.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Larry Wood. Welcome. Hi, Larry.
Hi, David. You need some books on your bookshelf.
Long story.
Okay. Well, thank you. My name is Larry Wood. I work as the Director of Organizing at Goddard Riverside Community Center, based on the Upper West Side. I'm here to testify on behalf of Single Room Occupancy, SRO, tenants who live in the remaining hotels and rooming houses here in New York City. I just want to start by thanking the board for the preliminary vote. There is a proposed guideline of 0%, and I think that is justified based on the economic conditions in the SROs and the lucrative sources of income outside of the rent-stabilized tenants still left in these buildings, and I think this is very justified. So again, I want to thank the members. I have been doing outreach, and I know many SRO tenants would like to thank you just the same, but many of them are on the other side of the digital divide. They don't have access to the internet. They have, a lot of them have limited minutes on their plans they have for their phones. So they're looking forward to the live proceedings where they could thank you in person, because it's just difficult at best for them to be able to participate in these proceedings in a remote fashion. But they are quite aware of the proceedings, and they're hoping that the zero guideline, the zero proposal, will stick, because that makes a big difference in their very, very limited income and their abilities to survive. Some of you guys actually have asked, in the invited panel, I had presented a pictorial history of SROs in the United States. A couple of you guys have asked for copies of that, so I'm going to follow up and send you the link to that, because I thought it was a great explanation of, again, about SROs and its history in the United States. I know my colleague Brian Sullivan from MFJ said he was surprised. He wrote a book on SROs, but every year I could still come up with something that he hasn't seen before, and I was pleased to hear that. There is a new memo, and I wanted to explain it a little bit, if there was any interest in the new memo that was just released. I just got a copy of yesterday.
Maybe it would be better to circulate that to the members. Circulate it to Andrew, and then he gets circulated to the members?
I just got it from Andrew yesterday.
Oh.
I just need a minute more. If there's interest, I could explain what it...
Larry, I'm going to ask that you send some written testimony on that, if that's okay? Just because we're trying to be fair and give everyone their two minutes and make sure everyone gets their chance.
Okay, that's fair. I'll just say that the memo does underscore all the reasons we've given over time why a zero guideline is justified.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
I believe our next speaker is Ann Korchak.
Yes.
Welcome, Ann.
Thank you. Recently, I received a letter from our attorney explaining that his hourly rate was going up because of his rising expenses. In January, my longtime super told me he was raising his monthly fee by 20%. In both cases, I evaluated the service they've been giving me and the value of the relationship that I've built with them over the years. I thought that their requests were reasonable, and I valued the trust that we had built over the years. So I didn't go looking for a new super or a new attorney. In a healthy, unregulated housing market, tenants would be making similar evaluations and decisions. Other expenses like utilities, taxes, and insurance are largely beyond my control. When I questioned the insurance broker as to why my rates increased a staggering 40%, she told me, "You own a building in New York City, which means you're in the construction business." When I challenged my tax assessment, which raised my taxes over 6%, I was rejected. My water usage went up drastically as tenants spent more time at home during the pandemic. Coming here each year to share with you what my small family business is facing as a housing provider is humbling and aggravating at the same time. Humbling, because I feel like a child having to beg a parent for permission to do something, and aggravating, because I'm pretty sure you won't listen to me. Every year, I say your analysis is flawed because you don't evaluate buildings like mine with less than 11 units. Every year, I hear you talk about the Bloomberg years, when owners got exorbitant increases. But looking back at that data for those 12 years, I see only one year where the water increase actually exceeded the PIOC. Like it or not, private owners are providing a huge portion of the affordable housing stock in New York City. City and state policies are making it harder and harder for us to provide good, quality, affordable housing. Your decision this month impacts our ability to do just that. So I ask you to vote for the guidelines you issued and approve a 2% increase on one-year leases and a 3% increase on two-year leases. And thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Danielle, from the RGB staff, is going to just make a reminder announcement.
I'm just going to remind everyone again about your names needing to match what you registered with on Zoom. With the exception of one person, everybody registered with their full name. If you're in here with just your first name or just your first name and an initial, I don't know who you are, and we're not going to be able to promote you. You can leave the meeting and come back in. You can name yourself whatever you want. So if you want to do that, and then we can make sure that we find you. And we do want to hear from everyone, but we can't promote people when, you know, there could be 100 people named Joe or 100 people named Mike. So if you could please do that, we'd really appreciate it. I also just want to say, for those of you who have your registration numbers, we are on approximately number four for both tenants and owners.
Thank you, Danielle, and welcome, Leah. Let the record reflect that Leah Goodrich, a public tenant member, is present.
Thank you, David.
And I think Steve Buckley is our next speaker.
Hi. Yes, I'm here. My name is Steve Buckley, and I live at 361 Ocean Avenue. It's a smaller rent-stabilized building in Flatbush. Mention that because my landlord owns 38 of them. So he's not what we would call small, although he may think so. I'm here to testify in solidarity with the thousands of New Yorkers who, like myself, have been left out of the unemployment system and are still struggling to get by. I lost my job earlier this year. The Department of Labor is claiming that I... It's, my application is still pending. My rent payments are not pending, and I pay my rent on time every day and every month. And I, you know, I do so because that's the contract we agreed to, but I am struggling financially. And so I want to, you know, there are, as much as there has been talk of lavish stimulus and people getting bailed out, that is not the case for thousands of people still living in our city, specifically people living in rent-stabilized buildings. Meanwhile, my landlord, last year, in the midst of a pandemic and probably will testify this week, crying poverty, took out a $2 million loan, not against the building, but against the rents paid last year to buy a 38th building to add to his portfolio. That's his right. We live in a capitalist system. Sure, that's great, but he does not need a bailout. He has doubled the legal rent in this building using MCIs and individual apartment improvements over the past decade, and I have the documentation prove that he did it. He has done well for himself, and that's okay. We're all understanding that landlords have a right to make money. But this just proves that landlords don't need an added revenue stream, and the Rent Guidelines Board choosing to do anything else than a rent rollback would be artificially subsidizing these rent-stabilized landlords.
Thank you. And I believe our next speaker is Joyce Holland. Welcome. Joyce, you're muted, just so you know, and your camera's not on either, if you want to have it on.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I got you.
I was knocked out.
I hear you and I see you.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to submit my testimony. My name is Joyce Holland. I manage property in northern Manhattan and Brooklyn. Small properties. I want to open with three separate tweets that have been posted in the last few days by non-for-profit tenant groups. The first, from the first group, it reads, "We won't let the New York City mayor off the hook for letting the Rent Guidelines Board raise rents this year. New Yorkers are still recovering from the pandemic. We demand a rent freeze." The next, "Hey, New York City mayor, why are you letting the Rent Guidelines Board consider raising rents during a pandemic? New Yorkers still are rebuilding their lives. We demand a rent freeze." And the last, "The Rent Guidelines Board and the New York City mayor wants to raise rent while New Yorkers are still recovering from the pandemic's twin health and economic crises. We demand a rent freeze." People seem to mistakenly believe that the RGB is a political arm of the mayor, Mayor de Blasio. They think that the RGB are controlled by the mayor. That is why they are making the case directly to the mayor to force you to do a rent freeze. They want you to tear down this institution, which is supposed to be an independent body, and have the mayor, thus have the mayor act like a dictator, forcing you to do his bidding. I sincerely hope that this Rent Guidelines Board is not what these tenant groups say you are, that you are instead an independent body that rejects anti-democratic rhetoric and does your job based on facts and data. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So David, we're our next guest. I'm trying to promote, and hopefully he'll be with us shortly.
And thank you.
He got bumped out, but he's getting back on, I believe.
Okay. I guess we can...
If we can get somebody to say in Spanish that he may need to accept being a panelist?
Does it make sense to have him second and have someone else first, Andrew? Would that make sense?
You mean go on to the next?
Yeah, and then just have him come on immediately thereafter?
Sorry, can we just have Alvin make the announcement? Because if they're a Spanish speaker, they might not know what we're saying right now.
Yeah. I don't know if it's Alvin or Liz. Yeah.
I am here. I'm here.
Well, maybe we should just move on and come back to that person?
Andrew, if that's okay with you, I would try to. I think that makes sense.
Okay.
And our next speaker is Belen Sanchez. Welcome.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Belen Sanchez. Y mi nombre es Belen Sanchez. Soy miembro del movimiento Justicia del Barrio, y no queremos que voten a favor del aumento de renta. Nosotros tuvimos ciertos problemas a raíz de la pandemia. Nos quedamos sin trabajo y por ende, sin alimentos. No nos alcanza para pagar la renta del tren. Tenemos niños en la casa y no tenemos para comprar comida, leche, pañales. La pandemia nos afectó tanto que nos quedamos sin ingresos. La renta se nos acumuló a la mayoría de nosotros, que somos de bajos recursos. Así que si ustedes votan a favor del aumento, lo único que se provocará es que se siga acumulando los pagos de la renta. Confiamos en que tomen la mejor decisión para apoyar a la comunidad más afectada.
Thank you. And I believe our next speaker is Jo W. I believe that's Joanna Wong, if I'm correct? I can't hear you, Joanna. You're muted. I think she may have taken herself off. Should we go to the next speaker? And when Joanna gets back on with sound, then we'll go to her. And Andrew, does that make sense?
Sure.
I have Jody Gould as our next speaker. Welcome. Jody, you're muted, and just so you know, your camera's not on, if you were intending to be.
No. I'm sorry about that. Here I am.
You're, we hear you and we see you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jody Gould, and I'm here with tenants and neighbors. I live at 202 Riverside Drive, and my landlord is Haberman &amp; Haberman. I've lived here since 1986. I'm a freelance writer who does not have a salary or benefits. My husband is a medical editor, and we together are a middle-class couple. We have a daughter in college who has lived at home for the last year due to the pandemic. And I am testifying here today on behalf of freelancers and creatives living in the city. I hope that you will all agree that the arts attract many people who live here. Were it not for rent stabilization, we and the 1.3 million freelance New Yorkers could not afford to live here. We pay more than, my husband and I pay more than 30% of our income on rent, and the rent increase... and the rent increases place a heavy financial burden on us. We live in fear of the day that we'll be priced out of the apartment that we've called home for decades and where our daughter was raised. And despite having a majority of market-rented tenants, our landlords continue to provide subpar services. We've had only one functioning elevator in a 90-unit apartment building for years, and the few communal washers and dryers that we have in the building are constantly broken down. Our guard, who has cancer, was recently fired for taking two days off for doctor's appointments. I ask you to vote, please, for a rent freeze or rollback so that people of all incomes and professions can afford to live in this great city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe Joanna Wong is on, and I think we see you, and I think we're going to be able to hear you.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, RGB members, for taking the time today to listen to my testimony. The stability of tenants and the stability of housing providers are interconnected. Both are important to a healthy and sustainable housing ecosystem. I am here today with that common goal in mind. For the last several years, there seems to be little focus on ensuring housing providers can operate responsibly, as demonstrated by the low or lack of any increases. By compromising a housing provider's ability to operate in a responsible and sustainable manner, this not only hurts the housing provider, but also hurts all the residents that the provider serves. Over the last seven years, one-year increases have averaged less than 1%. Over the same seven-year period, the PIAO has increased on average by 3.5% per year. For those who are unaware, the PIAO is supposed to reflect the cost of operations and maintenance for buildings that contain rent-stabilized units. Using the same seven-year period, property taxes in the building that I take care of has increased on average 16% per year. To understand what stresses we are under, the city also charges an 18% late fee even during COVID. I don't mean this in a condescending way at all, but any reasonable person can see that this is not sustainable over, you know, a long duration. I asked the RGB, when voting for this year's increases, to consider the prolonged duration of the low-to-no increases, especially in comparison to the prolonged duration of the high expenses. I asked you to at least keep up with this year's PIAO of 3%. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathleen Wakem.
Okay, oh, here I am. Do you see me and hear me?
Yes, we do. Welcome.
My name is Kathleen Wakem, and I am a rent-stabilized tenant on the Lower East Side of Manhattan. My building is owned by Madison Realty Capital, a private equity firm worth over $5 billion. As we know, the pandemic has tragically affected our city. Over 35,000 New Yorkers have died. The unemployment rate is 11.2%. More than half of rent-stabilized tenants fear eviction because they cannot pay the rent. The firm in center states that 42% of tenants have a decrease in income, and 34% of tenants have lost their jobs. Meanwhile, landlords are demanding rent increases because they claim loss of income. Yet, they have felt apartments vacant for years. For example, my landlord has warehoused half of the apartments in my 37-unit building for four years. According to the Coalition to End Warehousing, over 70,000 apartments have been warehoused across the city, while over 79,000 people are in temporary shelters. If landlords are in need of money, rent the apartments. If they are losing money, open the books and apply for a hardship rent increase. Also, this is the 15th consecutive year that landlords had a 2.9% growth in profit. This averages to approximately 45% profit. During the past 15 years, no landlord has applied for a hardship increase. During these years, tenants faced rent increases of 9%, poor taxes, fuel passalongs, NCIs, and IAIs. Erap will give landlords $2.4 billion. The role of the RGB is to assure affordability and stability, not profitability. They deserve a rent increase.
Thank you.
Landlords need and deserve a rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Cecilia. Hey.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Let the record reflect that Cecilia Hossa has joined us. And our next speaker is Christopher Athenios. Welcome.
Thank you. My family and I provide housing for about 150 families in Brooklyn, doing most of the work ourselves. We know all of our tenants on a first-name basis and have strived for the last 50 years to be the best property owners out there. We try to fix things before they break, before they become a crisis, to make everyone feel safe and secure in their homes. Our expenses these past few years have risen exponentially, yet the boards before you have ignored all of the expense data and the PIAO, and have looked solely at tenant affordability. What about owner affordability? Our water and sewer bills have increased 30% in the last year because of COVID. I get constant high-water usage alerts from the DEP every week. There's nothing I can do to control water usage. Tenants are working from home and learning from home. But this past year, we had a tree in our backyard that is taller than the building. It hangs over an adjacent property, causing a danger. I couldn't wait for it to fall or injure someone. That was a cost of $4,000, a cost that is not in the PIAO at all. And it's something that we couldn't do ourselves. We also had to answer a retaining wall violation for a new mandate the city has passed, which is not in the PIAO. Actually, we had to spend $10,000 for this engineer to prove to the city that we weren't even required to file this report. This board, and that's $10,000, that could have gone to improve our building for our tenants. This board needs to understand that it costs the same to erect a sidewalk shed on a 50-foot-wide property with 16 apartments in Brooklyn as it does on a 50-foot-wide property in Manhattan with 100 apartments. Yet, we don't have that same income as the Manhattan building. You're talking $15,000 to $20,000. When will the board act reasonably and provide us the ability to maintain and improve our buildings before it becomes too late? Our tenants deserve better. This board can do better. Let's end the politics and resist the pressure from the higher-ups and pass an increase that covers our costs. Please consider a 2% increase for a one-year lease and a 3% increase for a two-year lease. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Heliodora Guzmán.
Y ahora la escuchamos. Puede hablar. Mi nombre es Heliodora Guzmán. Este, represento a Movimiento por Justicia del Barrio, y no queremos que aumenten la renta por la situación que estamos viviendo. Cuando el COVID-19 empezó, todo se cerró. Yo me quedé sin trabajo. La preocupación mía era cómo pagar la renta, cómo pagar los billes de luz, de gas, y cómo comprar la comida de los niños. Y este... Pero gracias a Movimiento por Justicia del Barrio, me brindó su apoyo con comida, mascarilla, y desinfectantes. Para mí fue un alivio porque yo no tengo trabajo. Debo renta y no puedo pagar. Por eso, les pedemos que no aumenten la renta porque una renta muy alta no podemos pagar. Por lo mismo de la pandemia que nos ha dejado sin nada, sin trabajo. No podemos pagar la renta. Gracias.
Gracias. Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Hoffman. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Andrew Hoffman. I'm the owner-operator of rent-stabilized and rent-control apartments in New York City. This year's really got to be different. Doing business in this city is impossible in the best of circumstances. But it's been a terrible year for all of us, and the Rent Guidelines Board must transcend politics and set guidelines that reflect the cost of living and operating our properties, especially in the year we just lived through. You know, I lived through the recession in the 70s, the tech bubble in the 80s, and the market meltdown in 2008. Nothing, nothing compared to what owners faced in the past year. You know, it wasn't even about the rent. In the past, it was about lowering the rent and getting people in our buildings. This past year, we couldn't even get tenants to rent our apartments. Tenants are only now starting to come back. Tenants who can't pay their rent due to COVID issues can apply for subsidies, but owners cannot. It's very simple. The federal government gave a bailout to renters, not to owners, and the Rent Guidelines Board must provide fair and reasonable guideline increases to keep up with our growing expenses. It's your job during these hard times to make it possible for us to stay in business in this adverse economic environment. Your own reports have shown that operating costs are up significantly due to tenants using more electricity and water, increased cleaning and maintenance, and skyrocketing insurance costs. The PIAO was 3% in 2020. It demands a commensurate increase of 2.5%. Our property taxes, utility rates, everything went up, but we all know that there are a lot of expenses that were not captured in the PIAO. A survey of rent-stabilized property owners showed that operating costs are up by more than 10%. And the same survey showed operating income declined by 22%. The board's mandate is to review economic conditions and deal with all of the factors that tenants and owners are facing. Please give us a fair share, and don't let the nonsense of tenants who claim they can't pay their rent due to COVID affect your mandate. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Faceli Álvarez. Faceli, you're muted.
Faceli, por favor, active su micrófono. No le escuchamos. Sí, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Faceli Álvarez.
Welcome.
Y estoy aquí, como se hace, en camino a Nueva York. Vivo en Bushwick. Y mi propietario es Bushwick Richwood Affolio LLC, relacionado con 31 edificio en la ciudad de Nueva York. Vivo allí desde el 2006. Me gusta mi apartamento porque está cerca del hospital, del corredor, transportación pública, y cerca de la escuela de mis hijos. Pago cerca el 50% de mis ingresos familiares, solamente en alquiler. Tengo la suerte de no haber sido afectada mayormente por COVID-19, pero esto no ha sido el caso de mis padres y mis hermanos que también viven en Bushwick. Pagar el 50% de mis ingresos me hace estar en la categoría de tener carga de alquiler, pues pagamos más del 30% de nuestros ingresos. Un incremento de renta desestabilizaría mi estilo de vida y lo pago que acostumbramos a hacer de acuerdo al ingreso familiar, que es módico. Ya que solo mi esposo trabaja, una alza de la renta afecta nuestro bienestar. Y la verdad, estamos poco más de no poder sustentar este precio de renta tan alto. Hemos estado pagando a tiempo y sobresaliendo esta crisis. Conozco muchos casos de vecinos que han dejado el vecindario cuando nuevos dueños compran el edificio, empezaron a renovar y a subir las rentas. Ese es un fenómeno ha sido típico en lo que es Bushwick. Hay vecinos que han sido engañados y su renta han subido o han sido desalojados. Algunos han ido a vivir con sus familiares para compartir los gastos, pero han tenido que sobrepoblar los apartamentos. Esto ha sido y es muy devastador para cuando empezó el COVID. Pero para muchos, la única manera de poder quedarse en nuestro barrio, en Bushwick, es esta. Mi deseo es que se mantenga la renta accesible y que no haya un incremento, ya que los tratos de la pandemia han sido muy grandes, incluyendo a todos los familiares. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Hey, David. We've been in for about an hour now. I just wanted to make another few announcements for those folks who may have not been here in the beginning of the hearing. There is Spanish interpretation here today. To listen to testimony in Spanish, please use the interpretation button in Zoom to choose the appropriate channel. For English speakers, select the English channel to hear English speakers, as well as Spanish speakers interpreted into English. If you do not choose an interpretation channel, you will hear all testimony in the native language of the speaker. If you are using Zoom app on a smartphone, you may find the interpretation button by pressing the more button. If you would like to listen to a hearing with simultaneous interpretation in Spanish and do not have access to the Zoom app on either a mobile device or a computer, you may also do so by calling 646-558-8656, then entering meeting ID 86931307819. Meeting ID 86931307819. When prompted for a participant ID, press the pound sign. Then, when prompted, enter in passcode 705009. That's passcode 705009. And if you are listening to the Spanish translation by telephone and you plan to be testifying during the hearings, you will have to switch over to the main webinar to testify. Interpreters in the main hearing will translate your testimony for the board. Before it is your turn to speak, call 646-558-8656, then enter meeting ID 83877223517. Meeting ID 83877223517. When prompted for participant ID, press the pound, and then when prompted, enter passcode 403700403700. And if we could just read that out in Spanish for people who may be joining, who don't realize that they can get simultaneous Spanish translation via the phone.
Buenas tardes a todos. Ya llevamos una hora y pico de reunión, y quería hacer unos cuantos comentarios antes de que prosigamos, sobre todo para los que acaban de llegar a nuestra reunión. Hoy contamos con intérpretes de español. Para escuchar el testimonio en español, use el botón de interpretación en Zoom para elegir el canal apropiado. Para hablantes de inglés, seleccione el canal en inglés para escuchar a los hablantes de inglés. Así como los hablantes de español deben elegir los canales correspondientes. En este caso, el de español. Si no elige un canal de interpretación, escuchará todo el testimonio en el idioma nativo del hablante. Si está utilizando la aplicación Zoom en un teléfono inteligente, puede encontrar el botón de interpretación presionando el botón more, o sea, más. Si desea escuchar la audiencia con interpretación simultánea en español y no tiene acceso a la aplicación Zoom en un dispositivo móvil o computadora, puede hacerlo llamando al 6465588656. Nuevamente, el 6465588656. Y luego ingrese el número o tecla de numeración del número de identificación de la reunión, que en este caso sería el 86931307819. De nuevo, el número de identificación para la reunión sería el 86931307819. Y cuando se le solicite el número de identificación de participante, presione la tecla de numeración. Luego, cuando se le solicite, ingrese la siguiente contraseña, 705009. 705009. Si está escuchando la interpretación al español por teléfono y piensa declarar durante las audiencias, tendrá que pasar al seminario web principal para hacer esto. Los intérpretes de la audiencia principal traducirán su testimonio para la junta. Antes de que sea su turno de hablar, llame al 6465588656. Antes de que sea su turno de hablar, llame al 646-558-8656. Y luego ingrese el número de identificación de la reunión, que en este caso sería el 838-7722-3517. De nuevo, 838-7722-3517. Cuando se le solicite el número de identificación de participante, presione la tecla de numeración. Y luego, cuando se le solicite, ingrese la siguiente contraseña, 403-700-403-700. Muchísimas gracias.
Can I make one quick announcement?
Yeah.
I think I know what you're gonna say.
Okay, well, we either have passed a couple of people that we can't locate or we're about to pass some people. I cannot say your names because of the potential for Zoom bombing. I am gonna read out your registration number and your initials.
I'm sorry, Danielle, can you quickly tell me which number we're at? Because someone just texted me that they're... I'm not sure if this person, where they're at.
The next tenant will be number 10.
Oh, all right. Well, this person is number 51, so.
Well, yes, it's gonna be quite a while before we get to 51. I'm gonna read out your registration number, whether you're a tenant or an owner, and your initials. If you recognize yourself, and I'm saying that we have passed you or about to pass you, you need to leave this Zoom and come back in with your full name. If you're calling on the telephone, you're not calling from the telephone number that you gave us. Okay, so we have owner number one, initials SB. Owner number nine, initials DE. Owner number 10, AW. Tenant number 11, JG. Owner number 11, HC. Tenant number 12, GG. And owner number 12, AF. And tenant number 14, RR. I will go through this again later when we have some more people. Thank you.
And just to explain for newcomers, last year, some people kind of impersonated people who had registered to testify. And we're trying to avoid that, so that's why we're doing it this way.
And we will be shouting Black Lives Matter if the Zoom bombers do come back shouting racist statements, so that's clear.
Leah, you were gonna say something earlier as well. Did you have something? Okay, all right. All right, so. And I see that we have... Sorry, I'm just trying to get the full name. It's George S. Sarant. I see the beginning of the last name, Sarant, but I don't see the full. I can't see the full name. Danielle, is that Nick Sarantopoulos?
I believe it's someone who registers Nick Sarantopoulos.
Okay.
We're assuming, but again, your name does not match. We think it's you.
Nick, yeah, we can hear you. We can't see you if you had intended to be. We can see you now.
Hello, how are you doing?
Good thanks. Are you Nick?
My name is George Nicholas Sarantopoulos.
Okay, great. Welcome.
I couldn't fit all that. Can I start testifying?
Yes.
Okay, hello, thank you to the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. I appreciate you taking our testimony today. My name is George Nicholas Sarantopoulos. I'm a principal of Vista Realty. I own this building here with my family. It's a legal SRO. It's based here in Bay Ridge, Brooklyn. I understand it's been a tough year for everybody, but it's also been a tough year for landlords as well. I understand the emotional anecdotal information we're getting, but let me present some of the facts, and you'll see that it's been a tough year. Besides the clinging supplies and the need to clean more of the building, as an SRO, we don't get increases every year. The last time we got an increase was in 2011. So we don't get a lot of these PIAU increases or anything like that. We're asking for an increase because it's been about 10 years. At the same time, our real estate taxes have gone up 55%. Our insurance has gone up about 35%. And our utilities have gone up 12%. Now, just to understand, you know, people on the board might not understand this or know this off fact. We provide the utilities for the tenants in the rooms. So this is not just for the common areas. This is for their room and bathroom area and kitchen area. There's also been a 5% inflation rate the last year, the last couple of months, six months. We've spent about $40,000 improving the sidewalk. We got a sidewalk violation, which any kind of increase doesn't capture. Getting back to the real estate and tax increase, our real estate taxes went from approximately about $50,000 to about $80,000 from 2011. Eighty-two thousand, to be exact. So we're asking for an... We're asking for an increase just to be in line with the increased cost to maintain the quality of standards in this building.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. And I believe our next speaker is Bryn Thomas. Bryn, you're muted, and we don't see you if you intended to be on camera. Bryn, you're still muted.
Sorry about that.
No worries. We see you and we hear you.
Thank you. My name is Bryn, and I'm an active member in CASA and the Rent Justice Coalition. My husband and I live in the Bronx in an area seeped in history. Unfortunately, this history does not include landlords keeping up their rentals. Earlier this year, our landlord had to fix nearly every single apartment's windows because they didn't open properly. Some of my neighbors hadn't even been able to open their fire escape window in years. In 2008, America suffered the worst economic depression since the 1930s. As COVID-19 ravages the global economy, the 2008 struggles are eclipsed, and we are seeing economic troubles comparable to the 1930s. At the start of COVID, 70% of New Yorkers had less than $1,000 in savings. My husband and I had none, and even before the pandemic, we struggled. My husband made $1,525 an hour. In March 2020, we lost all income, but none of our expenses. My husband's diabetes does not care that we lost our income. It is a year later, and my husband works two days a week for $16 an hour. This same year looks very different for landlords. As of May 16, 2021, the average New York City landlord is making about $36 an hour. This landlord, whose hourly wage is over twice my husband's, is telling us they can't afford their bills. If my landlord can't pay their bills with $36 an hour, how can they expect us to pay ours on $16 an hour, two days a week? We can't afford a rent increase. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Anne Fried. Anne, you're muted, and we can't see you. Anne, you're still muted.
Can you see me? I can't.
I can hear you now. Your camera's not on, if you care.
It was on before. Oh, Lord. Well, in any event, I can speak.
Right.
You don't have to see me. I am... We have owned our building since 1955. The building is 106 years old. In the 66 years that we have owned this building, we have never had any kind of violations with regard to lead paint. Yet, we received a whole bunch of violations for lead paint that isn't visible. And to remediate that for the entire building, it's gonna cost us close to $1 million. This is something that we will not be able to receive any kind of compensation for. We have our arrears are $170,000. But a building that is 106 years old has an infrastructure that requires tremendous maintenance and gets more and more expensive each year. And we are never, ever going to be able to recoup that kind of money from rent increases. It seems it really... Our insurance costs are going up. Our repairs are going up. Our plumbing is 106 years old. We can't replace the plumbing in the building at the same time without having the tenants move out. So we have to do it as things come up, and it is very, very expensive to do that. Between the state legislation and local laws, we are getting clobbered with expenses that are ever mounting. Every single month it appears. We run a building. We have a staff of five. There are 101 apartments in our building. We are really good terms with our tenants. We have a wonderful staff. They're union. And you know, the average income for a union member is close to $80,000 a year. That's a very, very high expense. Our real estate taxes are really very punitive.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dale Goodson.
Okay, am I on?
You are, Dale. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dale Goodson, and I live at 441 East 12th Street in East Village in a rent stabilized apartment. And I'm asking for a rent freeze. I moved to New York from Seattle in 1991 as an actor and freelance writer, drawn to the rich mix of culture and arts of the city, especially in the East Village. Through friends, in 1991, I found my current apartment in this building as the landlord was having trouble renting his apartments due to the crime and drugs in the neighborhood. He got a tenant, and I got a rent stabilized apartment. And many of my longtime neighbors in the building have a similar story. But without affordable rent stabilization, this would not have been possible. By the end of the 90s, as the scene changed in the city and it became harder to make ends meet, I found a position as a homeless outreach worker in the Port Authority Bus Terminal. It was steady income, and I really enjoyed the work and the people I worked with. But again, this would have not been possible without affordable rent. Unfortunately, the program was eliminated with the crash in 2008, and I went back to freelance writing, which got me by until I became eligible for SCRI rental assistance for seniors. This combined with my rent stabilized apartment is the only way I can afford to remain in the city, where I've now become a community activist for qualitative life issues with our block association, of which I am president. The pandemic has been devastating for low-wage earners such as myself, as well as small landlords. I believe it is also vital for the city to help them separately so that they can keep their buildings and we can keep our housing. My margin of affordable living is razor-thin, and I can't absorb a rent increase. We need a rent freeze now more than ever. And I ask that the city quit pitting renters against landlords. Do something different. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Lincoln Eckless. Lincoln, you're muted.
Hey.
There you go.
Hey, Lincoln.
I'd like to say thank you to Dr. D for hearing us today, and God bless the last speaker. Because we do need to stop pitting tenants against property owners. Speaking of which, my boiler failed at the very end of this heat season, and the temperature was 20 degrees outside. And I have not had a call from HPD. It's because my tenants know and trust that I will solve the problem. The thing is, the boiler replacement, because it cannot be fixed, the boiler replacement is upwards of $70,000. I'm in a situation where it's extremely difficult to get a loan because I'm rent stabilized, and the loans are based on my cash flow. And in this environment, where the laws are being changed on us at any given moment, it's not possible to do an equity loan on the property. And just this last rainstorm, I now have a roof leak. That said, I'm in a situation where in the last seven years, my property tax has gone up pretty much 100%. Probably packed in water is about 60% of my gross revenue as of 2019. So you guys are the only option for us small owners right now. I had a tenant die. His apartment, the maximum that I could bring in for that apartment is $430. I can't do anything with that because it's a money loser day one. That family, my parents put them in before rent stabilization fully came into effect. My parents put them in. It's a money loser. I can't do anything with that apartment right now. I need an increase that's sensible long-term, year over year. I do not want to crush my tenants, but we need sensible increases.
Thank you, Lincoln. Thank you. Leslie Leong, could you just hold one second? I think there's a tenant who I'm supposed to call on. I'm just trying to figure it out. Danielle, you said tenant 14 should be promoted, or should I go to Mr. Leong?
We can go to tenant 14. His last name is not there is the issue. So I was suggesting maybe we allow him to speak, and then... Actually, I'm not even seeing him now.
Okay, well, let's go to Leslie Leong, and then we'll try to work in tenant 14.
Can you hold on just one second?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Leong, please just hold one second. We're just trying to... We're trying to vary between tenant and owner, tenant and owner, so we're just trying to do that.
All right, can you please tell us your last name?
Roberto, Roberto, could you tell us?
Yes, Rodriguez. That's Roberto Rodriguez.
Okay, so Mr. Leong, just hang tight, and we'll hear from Mr. Roberto Rodriguez, and then come to you, okay?
Fine.
Thank you. Roberto, do you want to turn on your camera? It's not on, in case you are not aware.
Give me one second. There you go. Hold on.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, just give me one second. Okay, I'm ready. Now I can see it. Good.
The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Hello again. My name is Roberto Rodriguez. I am here with Saint Nick's Alliance Uno en Los Surets Lucha. I am a rent stabilized tenant who can be homeless with even a 1% rent increase. I live here in North Williamsburg all my life. I like where I live because it is my community. Currently, more than 50% of my income goes to rent. This means that I am rent burdened, according to HUD. 30% of... The average monthly unordered NOI in residential-only city of New York, that is not operating income, of 499%. So as you can see, even a 1% increase would only put me, my family, and my community in a more precarious situation, since we are already paying more than 30% of our income for rent. My son lost most of his school friends because their families were not able to continue paying the high rent being charged for their apartment. My parents had to go back to Puerto Rico and leave the community they lived in for over 50 years when they retired because rents were too damn high. COVID-19 already has placed my community in a precarious situation financially because many are not able to pay the rent. Many have lost income due to unemployment. Some have even borrowed money from friends, family, or paid rent using a credit card. It is shameful when landlords say rents should be increased because of the pandemic. They neglect to say that 20% of the landlords who were offered back rent from the Homes and Community Renewal Rent Relief Program didn't take the money. Guess they didn't need the money then or now. The new emergency rental assistance program will spur $2.4 billion into landlords' pockets. Landlords are going to get their money, while New York City has almost unheard of 11.2% unemployment rate in March 2021. This is why I say zero rent increase. Thank you, RGB, for your time, and it's time for a rent rollback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie, welcome, and thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. One of the things that we've been hearing a lot about in the past year with the pandemic is the call... is the call to follow the science. I echo that call with, by saying, follow the data. The Rent Guidelines Board was established back when rent stabilization was established, and that was the contract between owners and the city, that the city would administer this program that would make sure that decisions on rent to keep them affordable yet followed economic information, that followed the data. Certainly, like, the last 10 years, it seems that we've gone away from that, and the Rent Guidelines Board seems to have been a puppet of the mayor, and has become a political arm of the mayor. I think it's important for the Rent Guidelines Board to go back to its mandate and administer the rent stabilization laws. And as one of the earliest speakers asked, I think one of the worst things we could do is to pit landlords and tenants against each other. We have a shared interest, and when we pit each other against each other, no one wins. And one thing that I asked the Rent Guidelines Board to consider is that its job is to administer the rent stabilization law, to make economic decisions, and not to conflate that with the terrible time that renters have had, particularly in this past year with COVID. Renters have suffered enormously, and we all, you know, feel badly about that, and it's very painful for everyone.
Thank you, Leslie. Our next speaker is Patricia Parenti. Patricia, you're muted. And we, you're unmuted for a second, but you're muted again, and we don't see you on camera, if you intend to be on camera.
I didn't mean to be muted.
Okay, I can hear you now.
You can't see me, it's okay, because I'm kind of famous, but anyway, start the video. Oh, okay, sorry, just, now you can see me.
Now we can see you, yes, welcome.
Sorry. My name is Patricia Parenti, I don't think the rent should be raised, because many people are unemployed, it is very hard to find a job if you're freelance or in general. There's been COVID for a year, and people are not able to pay the rent as it is. Do you want more homelessness? I donate clothes like every month to Urban Pathways on 30th between 7th and 8th. They ladies that work there tell me many people had homes, but due to rent increases, they lost them. If landlords need more money, maybe they'd like to stop warehousing apartments, and maybe they'd like to rent out storefronts, because I live in Manhattan, and I see that that's a major problem. Also, are the vacant new buildings with borrowers renting, that nobody lives there? Why don't we tax them and give money to these poor landlords who are struggling, instead of raising poor to middle-class people's lives? And then they're going to go on the street, and then they're going to be homeless, and we don't need any more homeless, because that's New York's number-one problem. So that's why I don't think that we should raise the rent, because it's going to lead to homelessness, because nobody's working, I mean, some people are, obviously, the kid that delivers Amazon packages, but the rest of us struggle, and I know I struggle to find work, because I freelance and fashion, and there has been no work since the beginning of COVID. So that's my story.
Thank you so much for testifying.
You're welcome.
And I believe our next speaker is Eli Namias.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you, we can't see you, if you, now we can see you, too.
Hi, where are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you, welcome.
Great, thank you. So thank you for having me to speak on today. I understand everybody's throwing data around and numbers, I'm not a numbers guy, I'm actually a high school dropout, trying to make it in New York City, and I have great tenants. I don't have one bad tenant, and they've all come to me and asked me for help. I've reduced their rent by 20% each. Building supplies have gone up by 60%. A piece of plywood used to be $27, now at Home Depot, it is $90. I have a tenant that's been with me for 14 years and needs a new ceiling, because it's peeling and cracking and falling. I have to fix it. Who's going to pay for that? I do. That's going to be $2,500 to give her a new ceiling, new lights, new this, and I can't get a rent increase. Not that I would rent, I would increase it to them, but I need to have my legal rent increased, so when they move out, I'm able to increase it. I've had empty apartments for four months, five months, and I tried to raise, I've tried to lower the rent, which still no help. So I've lowered my rent by 20%. So my rent stabilized, I have people paying $800, $900. I'm at a loss with that apartment, not a win, a loss. Even if you raised the rent, I'd still be at a loss. But I took that building, knowing that I'll be at a loss with that apartment. That is a business move I did, but I also knew that my increase would happen every year, year over year, to compensate for that, and that has not happened. And I'm just, I don't know what to do. I have empathy for my tenants, and I'm going, I'm diving in for whatever they need. I'm not going to, if I can't afford it, I can't afford it, but regardless, I'm going to do what I have to do to keep them in a safe and sound environment, and they appreciate that. But in no way, they're going to tell me, okay, Eli, so you can, please increase the rent, or else we're going to lose our buildings to big corporations that are going to make it worse for the tenants, not better.
Thank you, Eli.
Sharon, if you're there, you need to accept being a panelist before you can speak.
Danielle, do you think it makes sense to promote someone else at the same time, and whoever comes on first, and then the other person can jump on next? I see that we have Andrew Latzko. Andrew, you're muted. Andrew, your camera's not on, if you care, now you're all set.
Yes, hi, everybody, good afternoon, my name is Andrew Latzko, I am a third-generation property owner-manager in Brooklyn, and I apologize, I had some very concise remarks prepared with some numbers, et cetera, but had a little bit of a gas issue with the tenant, had to run, got my hands dirty, and that's what I do. I serve my tenants, I run when I'm needed. Like I said, I'm a third-generation property owner, and, you know, I don't think that there's going to be a fourth generation in my family, and I think what is happening in combination from the state, our governor, and what's been happening with this Guidelines Board over the last seven, eight years, is really driving a stake through the heart of the small landlord like myself. I'm yet to hear the person who says, "I love my monolith corporation, mega-management company," or my public housing, people who run it, whatever the term would be, but I know that my tenants do appreciate me, and I appreciate them, and I do serve them very well. But given what continues to happen with this board, again, it's just driving the person like me, who, you know, they have my cellphone, they call me on a Sunday evening if they need me, and I jump. And I think everybody who is a member of this board, outside of their role as, in their official capacity, knows that prices of everything go up. You're all adults, you're established with your own lives, you have expenses, and you know things continually get more expensive. If you haven't had a conversation with anybody who's in any sort of a trade, perhaps you've heard about the cost of lumber, the scarcity of lumber, the price of copper, which is used for piping, various plumbing metals, things like that. These things are all sky... Again, had my two minutes perfectly timed out, but, you know, duty called, so I apologize for rambling on there and not really getting to my point, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Andrew. I believe our next speaker is Virginia Crawford, if I'm not mistaken. Virginia, you're muted, and your camera's not on. All right, you're unmuted. You're still muted, Virginia. Virginia, we can't hear you.
Hi there.
Hey, we hear you and see you.
Great, how are you? Thank you so much for doing this. My name is Virginia Crawford, I live in a rent-stabilized apartment in the West Village at 40 Horatio Street, and I've lived here for 17 years in a 20-unit building, and there are another 20 units next door at 42 Horatio Street. Both buildings were purchased in 2013 for $13 million by a real estate investor and owner of 45 buildings in New York. Since the purchase, 25 of 40 apartments have been totally gutted while tenants lived here. We've endured seven years of construction harassment, exposure to lead dust, floor refilling fumes, and several long-term incidents of exposure to friable asbestos. 23 building permit applications claimed no one lived in the building while the building was full of tenants. There are 260 HPD complaints since 2014, when the building was purchased. We've been charged $350,000 in major capital improvements, which have personally cost me over $8,000. On top of the Rent Guidelines Boards, I've paid over $14,000 out of my pocket since this owner purchased the building. When this building is sold, as is their business plan, I will not recoup a single penny of this money, but my landlord will. I lost my job at the start of COVID, my rent is now 55% of my income. Every single mayoral candidate is talking about preserving and creating affordable housing. We have been in hand-to-hand combat here on the ground, trying to save our stabilized apartments and save money, so we, too, can own a home. Please do not increase our rent. Doing so will give my predatory landlord the ammunition he needs to push us out of this building, as has been his business plan all along. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gregory Bronner. Gregory, you're muted. There you go. Hey, Gregory.
Hi, my name is Gregory Bronner, I own one rent-stabilized apartment in Brooklyn Heights. I have owned it since 2008, the tenant has lived in this apartment since 1971, and recently thanked you for 50 years of happy residency. He pays $1424 for a large area 750-square-foot unit in a 110-year-old apartment building. At this point, the direct hard costs of running this apartment are about 20% above the rent that I collect, and this does not include the costs of repairs in the unit, nor does it give me any payment for any of my time. Your board is failing to account for huge new costs not measured in the PICO, such as Local Law 10, new lead safe rules, bedbug reporting rules, as well as the additional time and effort required for compliance. My building had to replace all of the gas risers, which is $800,000, due to getting red-tagged by Con Ed. This can't be recouped. Likewise, even small things, like the cost of filing with HPD, has gone from $11 to $33, and the form has gone from one page to five. At this point, I've ceased any investment in this unit. My tenant asked for a new stove, and I said no, because it would take me 17 years to get my money back. Likewise, the ceiling fell, I got a $2,500 quote to patch 30 square feet of plaster ceiling. I mean, I went in and did it, it doesn't look great, but the entire apartment is going to fall apart if you guys don't give us reasonable amounts, reasonable rent increases to pay for these things. I'm not making any money, I'm not asking for a profit, but I'm asking not to lose money. And my sister's kid is in, just had her kidney taken out yesterday, cancer, and I'd rather spend money on that than subsidizing my tenants. Thank you.
Danielle, do you need anything on my end, or?
I'm not sure, Andrew was mostly in charge of promoting people.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, but I see Jennifer.
I think we should try Sharon again, maybe?
Sure, I see a Jennifer Malakot, so I'm going to call on Jennifer, Jennifer, you're muted.
Hang on.
I got, I hear you, but if you want your video on, you should turn that on, I see you, I hear you when I see you.
Okay, sorry. I was just riding you, because I was waiting for so long and needed to jump off the call, but I, hi, my name's Jennifer, I want to thank you for listening to my testimony, I've lived in Chelsea since 1993. I was fortunate enough to move here from a small town in Arizona, because I got a rent-stabilized apartment and a job in four days, which was amazing, I live in Chelsea. My building's a pre-welded building with 30 four apartments, we're currently at about 10% occupancy, because my landlord is warehousing apartments and is not maintaining the building or advertising apartments for rent. Just today, I experienced a three-hour water outage, as there are issues with the bones of the building due to lack of residency or use. The last occupant that moved into our building was February 2020, that couple had moved from Atlanta to start a business, they moved out in February 2021. We've not had a single new tenant move in the building since February 2020. I'm trying to understand why my landlord is keeping vacancies in my building, when I am the only rent-stabilized apartment, and there are no rent-controlled apartments. I think it's, there's little maintenance to my building in a primary in Chelsea, even if my landlord put apartments back on the market, he has historically charged $3,500 to $3,700 for a 650-square-foot apartment. Let's break that down to a mortgage, if you are buying the apartment, a $4.5 to $5 million apartment. I was excited when a friend told me recently, they bought a studio for $550,000 in the West Village, which is ridiculous. A relative just bought a beautiful home in a not-so-cheap market in Phoenix, Arizona, for $650,000, which is 3,500 square feet. You are going to drive everyone out of New York by raising the rents. Why should we be here if we don't have jobs? We don't have jobs, we don't have supportive service, it's going to be a ghost town, except where the rich Dubai-like buildings are being built, and who's to say, and who's going to be here to serve those rich people? Nobody's going to be able to work.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Robert Lee.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Robert, we can.
Oh, I don't have video, oh, okay. Good afternoon, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I have properties in Brooklyn, I am not Blackstone, et cetera. The rent increases over the past six years have been approximately 1% each year, whereas our property taxes and insurance have gone up tremendously, almost in double digits each year. We're also dealing with increases in utilities and the cost of maintenance. I'm not unsympathetic towards tenants, but this is... I'm not unsympathetic towards tenants, but this isn't working year after year. We have to get proper increases to keep up in the building. If the government so much doesn't want to give us the increases, why don't you, why don't the government regulate the property tax, or regulate the insurance industry? Or step in and give tenants more help? Because the way it is now, we're just not sustaining. We also had to respond to a lot of people's talk about the warehousing. We have had our IAIs, which is individual apartment improvements, we had them crushed, as well as vacancy allowance taken away. So a lot of owners do not have the money to renovate vacancies, especially from tenants that have been there long-term. So please, I ask again, if you could give us a proper increase, so it could keep up with expenses. And as far as what Assemblymember Rosenthal and Senator Jackson said about the ERAP, we're not all getting reimbursed in whole. I have a tenant working 15 months, hasn't paid anything, because he said he called his senator, and someone in the office said, "Don't pay rent." So the guy's not paying anything. He has worked throughout. He will not qualify, and he has not applied. So we're not all getting reimbursed. Thank you again for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Let me just make a couple of notes while we wait for the next person to be promoted up. It seems like the staff is trying, is inviting people to be panelists, and some people are not accepting the invitation to be panelists, and that's why there's a delay between speakers. So if you receive an invitation to be promoted to a panelist, please accept that. And just so people who have registered have a sense, we're in the late teens and early twenties for both tenants and owners who registered in order, just so you could have a sense of where you're at in the, in the, in the order of speakers. And then, I think, other than that, we're ready to promote our next panelist.
Um, so David, with that said, I am going to allow Sharon to talk if they're not accepting the invite.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, wait, I had to promote her again. So Sharon, if you do get to promote, can you please accept as a panelist? And I'm also going to allow Kim to speak as well.
Great. Is it okay if we have Kim go first, because she's up?
Yeah, sure, sure.
All right, so Kim, you're, you're, you're on now, you're muted and your camera's off, just FYI.
Let's see, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
I don't know if I can figure out how to, how to put my camera on, on a webinar. I don't know if that's okay, I may be just not doing it, because I'm also in a playground.
That's totally fine.
I don't know if I can do it. But thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Kim Hopkins, I'm a community activist and public school parent in Harlem, and I am speaking today as an advocate for tenants to urge members to vote no on the proposed increases to rent stabilized apartment leases. I want to thank the members who, in hearing the preliminary vote from the April 15 meeting, the individuals who did vote no initially, I think that that is commendable and demonstrating that to the people of New York that are still suffering from the effects of the pandemic. And I also just want to mention, I think that small landlords who've spoken eloquently tonight, today, deserve continued access to programs that help them too. However, tenants should not be responsible for supporting the housing economic ecosphere. Tenants are suffering, and the fact that, that no 2020 income data were available during that meeting that I was listening to from April 15, I think should have been kind of like the bullseye that this was a moot point. So I, I believe, as a, as a person who lives in a building with multiple tenants on fixed incomes, and who have lost their jobs, many of whom had COVID and have dealt with the lasting effects of COVID, that this is not the time to, to raise rents on those tenants. While affluent New Yorkers have made gains over the last 18 months, they are not renters that are in these predicaments, they're not renters in rent stabilized apartments. The vast majority of New Yorkers are still struggling, and they're gonna continue to suffer the consequences of COVID-19 and its domino effects for years. Holding rents flat now or rolling them back is the only reasonable option at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Andrew, Sharon, is she, has she accepted the? Should we go to Brian?
Yeah, go to Brian.
Brian, welcome. Brian Liff, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My wife and I bought an eight-studio building in March of 2019 to combine four of the units as our family home. Three months later, the HSTPA was passed, and all of our dreams and hard work were shattered. In one fell swoop, the state decided that tenants had more rights to occupy our personal property than we did. So now, having been forced to be a full-time landlord, let me tell you why even the maximum proposed increases are not enough. It comes down to three simple factors: increased costs, risks, and the elimination of all other avenues to equalize building costs and income. Let's start with increased costs between 2019 and now. Our insurance costs have increased 76%, maintenance, both repairs and cleaning, have gone up 50%, as well as utilities. And given the state's, the city's dire financial situation, the rate of inspections, fines, and fees have all exploded. Now, increased risk. Even before COVID, the courts heavily favored tenants. No one can deny that. So the process of taking a tenant to court was usually folly for owners, which generated huge expenses. Thus, they were always the last resort. With the HSTPA providing free legal representation to even professional tenants, the courts closing due to COVID, it became impossible to recover costs. Finally, let's talk about other avenues to increase our operational income. It'll be really short, because none exist. Thus, it boils down to this: these lease increases are the last avenue property owners have to maintain and reinvest in their properties. Without them, projects get pushed out, and housing quality deteriorates, and the tenants suffer. Forget about profitability. The maximum proposed increases would be a bare minimum in order for most of us to stay afloat. If we have had, if not, we have little alternative but to shutter our available apartments, be given less money, and have much less risk by keeping them vacant. It is not a threat. It's already happening, it's common knowledge, and by punishing property owners with insufficient rent increases, you're greatly accelerating the rate of warehousing.
Thank you, Brian. Our next, thank you. Our next speaker, I believe, is Mike Boomer. Mike, you're, you're muted, and your camera's not on, FYI.
Hey, guys, how are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to testify in this particular hearing. Yeah, my name is Mike Boomer, I'm a senior citizen. I live in a poor green neighborhood in Brooklyn for the last seven years, and I have been at 67 Hanson Place all these years. I am on fixed income, at present, I'm paying 75% of my income for rent. I am, with the cost of living rise in New York City, especially in housing, with the worldwide epidemic of COVID-19, my financial stability has minimized financial hardship. I can barely afford my rent now, and an increase will hurt me as well as other citizens. I've had to work with senior organizations from Impact Brooklyn, because my landlord botched building wire rehabilitation that covered a plumbing system, which no one complained about, to one that requires three to five flushes to eliminate feces or urine. The landlord also refused to replace the 90-old dysfunctional windows. My landlord is BEC Timonium Management, who owns at least 81 buildings, primarily in Bed-Stuy and Crown Heights. In 2018 alone, this landlord evicted seven of the 102 rent stabilized leaseholders in my building. According to the New York State Court Electronic Filing Live Case Search, this landlord has opened 80 non-payment cases since March 1, 2020. That means there are 80 people who now have to defend their housing stability due to financial hardship. Raise the rent as per the usual protocol is the wrong thing to do. The entire world has been shaken away from the usual protocol, and should the RGB by providing a 5% rollback? I don't believe my landlord deserves a increase due to the reasons I've mentioned above, and more importantly, I cannot afford the increase in rent. I'm asking the RGB for a 5% rent rollback. Thank you very much for hearing me today.
Thank you, Mike. Our next speaker is Irving Lee.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. I'm a Chinese-American, second-generation Chinatown property owner, who owns a single-tenant building. Besides the daily maintenance that must be done, my building requires major renovations, which are still going on today. My building was built in 1910. Like many small property owners in Chinatown and across New York City, we provide the bulk of affordable housing in New York City. We need substantial increases from the rent stabilized tenants to maintain our property while providing safe and affordable housing for the community. In some cases, the rents provided by the tenants do not meet the expenses of the property. My business relies on commercial rents to supplement and put us in the black. This has become especially more difficult with the pandemic, causing losses of businesses in the commercial sector. Like any other successful business operation, there needs to be accountability on my part, not only making sure everything is run right economically, but physically satisfying the needs of my tenants. We provide the substantial income of New York City, to New York City coffers by paying our real estate taxes. Losing us, I'm sorry, losing us would have negative consequences, impact as well as the well-being of the city economy. We are responsible stewards of the city's survival, but only if we get the necessary income to do our jobs and make it viable. Rent freezes will be physically irresponsible. I was in Cuba in February of 2020. The elimination of the landlord in 1960s has had negative consequences to the housing stock in Havana. Issues in determining responsibility for the upkeep of the building, along with the lack of income, has caused deterioration of the housing stock. The Cuban government, recognizing the crisis, has allowed for the re-establishment of private property, businesses, and rents, even allowing families to own two homes. It is the Chinatown property owner like myself that makes Chinatown feasible. We don't charge exorbitant rents in order to help businesses thrive. If we lose our property due to the lack of income, like rent freezes, Chinatown may not survive. Larger real estate interests will buy up our properties and concentrate the wealth in fewer hands and accelerate gentrification. Thank you.
Thank you, Irving. Thank you.
David, can I just jump in?
Yeah.
We have a tenant speaker next, but Isabel, you will be the next owner.
All right, and so I think Regina Karp, Andrew, right? That's who's next?
Correct. Regina's next, and then Isabel, you'll be following.
Great. Regina, you're muted, and we don't see you if you want to be on camera.
Okay, I will.
Spanish phone.
Oh, that's, Leah, that's for the translation.
Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Regina, I can, just give me one sec, but yes, I can see you and hear you, although I only see the top part of your face, if you, I don't know if you can.
Okay.
There you go, perfect.
Okay. I'm Regina.
Hold on, Regina, just give me one second. Leah, that's, so we could translate in all the various ways that we have to translate, you know, the English, whatever, it's, I don't even exactly know, but it's.
I was just making sure it wasn't, you know, like it's.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an RGB staff phone. Regina, sorry for that. Welcome, and the floor is yours.
Right. I'm Regina Karp. I'm a 81-year-old widowed, rent-controlled, I haven't heard any rent-controlled people speak, tenant. I've lived in New York City my whole life, I've been in my apartment for 52 years, but every night, before these hearings every year, I lose sleep, because I do not want to have to leave the city, but I can't afford to live here if my rent goes up. Right now, my rent is my entire teacher's pension, which is more than 50% of my income, not 30, 50% of my income. I don't, I don't qualify for screwing, so I'm sort of in a bind. What is really ironic to me is that I have, do you hear me?
Yes, we do, Regina.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. What is really, what is incredibly ironic about what is, terribly ironic to me, is that I have done so much pro bono work for this city, and for my landlord, as it turns out. I was very active in Parents Association, making my neighborhood desirable for good schools. I worked for block associations to beautify the block. I have worked in my building to beautify, collecting money from tenants to redo the lobby, to do re the hallways, at our expense. So all of the pro bono work that I have done, forget my public school teaching, where I earned originally under $5,000 a year for years, but besides that, all of the work I have done has now, I'm in the position of not being able to afford in the neighborhood that I improved my landlord and for the city. And it is so distressing, listening to these hearings, whichever year I attend, and they just seem pro forma. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Regina. And then, Andrew, I think you gave me a name for our next speaker.
I think you gave me the name of the next speaker.
I believe it's Isabel.
Isabel Del Alex.
Isabel, you're muted, and your camera is not on.
Can you hear me and see me now?
Yes, now I can. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank the board for this opportunity to testify. My name is Isabel Del Alex, I'm a small property owner, not a private equity firm. I'm living and renting apartments in Harlem. I'll do work full-time as an educator, and as many New Yorkers, due to COVID, the number of classes I teach decreased, and I lost income. I spent tens of thousands of dollars renovating two apartments to update the apartments with modern appliances, kitchens, and bathrooms. I've offered a 0% increase on the rent of my apartments over the last two years to help my tenants and mitigate the impact of COVID crisis. Meanwhile, my expenses and taxes, electricity, water, insurance, have increased all over 10%. Federal Reserve estimate inflation to increase above 6% in New York by the end of this year. Rising operating costs to offer affordable housing is encouraging small property owners to consider selling to larger property owners. There's not a week when I don't receive an offer to buy this property. And those property, large property owners, can afford to warehouse apartments and litigate non-paying tenants. I wanted to continue to offer affordable quality housing, but I cannot keep up with rising costs. If the board is approving a zero rent increase for one-year and two-year lease, I could only continue affordable housing with lower property taxes, insurance, and utility costs, and those would need to be frozen as well, and we know this is not gonna happen. So thank you for your consideration to increase the rent.
So David, we have one more owner that's currently here, that's, that was pre-registered.
Okay.
Our plan is to have her speak, and then we are going to be followed by, I believe, four speakers that, that will be Chinese-speaking. So I'm gonna allow Leslie to go first, so that those Chinese speakers can all, there's four in a row that they can all speak, so.
Great.
I'm gonna promote Leslie now to speak.
And Leslie's last, do we have a last name, or should I just introduce as Leslie, or?
I believe it's Jones, Leslie Jones.
Welcome, Leslie Jones. I, you're muted.
Leslie, if you're, press star six to unmute yourself on the telephone.
Thank you.
Hi, Leslie, we can hear you.
Okay, hi. Um, my name is Leslie Jones. I am a Black woman, senior citizen, and I am still working to supplement my small property on. I have six apartments in Brooklyn. I am not collecting any rent since last year. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear, we've heard you.
Okay, should I start over again?
No, we, we. No, we hea- we heard you from the beginning.
Okay. Now, I took out a loan to fix up my property five years ago. I spent over a hundred thirty thousand dollars for new renovations, electrical upgrade, plumbing, granite countertops, which I don't have. My credit cards are out the max. My water bill is rising. My property tax is rising. I tried to get a reduction in my property taxes, which they did not assist me. I contacted the governor, the mayor, and my congresspeople for assistance, which no one helped. Even DCHR did not help me. My credit cards are over the limit. I had to borrow money from my children and friends to pay my taxes. Right now, my taxes are in arrears for April and July. I owe two thousand five hundred forty-two dollars for oil bills. I'm at the point that I am so frustrated that I can't receive any assistance, but yet tenants are afforded an opportunity. And I don't understand why I am not given consideration to even take away the interest on my property taxes. Mortgage companies, insurance companies, they all say they give you a breather, but they don't give you a breather. They turn around and they tell you you have to still pay interest. That's not fair. I do not get any type of relief. Yes, the tenants get relief, and they don't want to pay anything. I paid for the oil and everything else, but nobody assists me. I just would appreciate if the tenants, the guideline board does the right thing and give an increase for the small property owners. It's not fair for us to bear the cost.
Thank you.
I'm at the point where I'm about to sell my property, and then there will be further reduction in, in affordable housing. My rent is one thousand to thirteen hundred dollars. That's not fair.
Leslie, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, um, Dave, just to let you know, we're promoting Emily. She will be, um, they're all at their offices, so they'll all come on, on, under Emily's name. So they're going to have to let you know their names.
Great, thank you. Uh, welcome, Emily.
Hi, we're here. Can you hear us?
We can. We can hear you and see you. Um, and if you just could introduce each speaker, um, by their name as they, as they testify, that would be great.
Okay, um, I think he, uh, Mr. Chen will introduce himself, uh, in his testimony.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, is the interpreter ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome, Mr. Chen.
Hey.
Thank you, Mr. Chen.
Okay, um.
Welcome.
Mr. Sheer.
Welcome, Mr. Sheer.
Yeah. Hi.
Hello.
Hello. 你们觉得这样子是对吧？ 我们现在非常需要减租。谢谢。
Thank you, Mr. Sheer.
Um, this is Mr. Yang.
Welcome, Mr. Yang.
谢谢。
Thank you.
Um, this is Ms. Chen.
Welcome, Ms. Chen.
你好。
你好。
那疫情一点多了，我都没有开工了。最好的是必须减租，谢谢。
Thank you.
Um, that's everyone for us.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Emily. And our next speaker is Martha Seymour. Martha, you're muted, and your camera's not on.
Okay, I.
I can hear you now.
Good. I will try for the camera. I am, um, a street tenant. And, um, have lived over fifty years in my apartment, and it's been very important to me to be stable and to have these New York State laws as good as they can be. And I've seen other tenants who need that too. I, um, am forty years sober, and I am a mental patient in remission. The, um, being able to be steady in my own little place has helped me do that. And, um, after COVID, it's good to go out, but it's good to be steady right here and know that other older people and people have these laws to back them up. And I thank you for your, uh, government service. And, um, tenants and neighbors has backed me up and others. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martha, for your testimony. Um, I believe our next, uh, testimony comes from, I, I think it's pronounced Miki or Miki. Uh, your, your, uh... Hi, did I get your name? Did I pronounce your name properly?
It's Miki, Miki Tate.
Wel- welcome, Miki.
Um, so, as it's already been stated, I'm Miki Tate, and, uh, I'm a member of Met Council on Housing. I live in Harlem on one hundred and forty-first Street, and my landlord is Guardian Property Management LLC. I've lived here since two thousand and eight. My landlord owns forty-three buildings in New York City. I run my own dog walking business, um, and I pay sixty-five percent of my income in rent. On Christmas Day, twenty nineteen, before COVID, the ceiling in my bathroom collapsed on me. This was not the first time it collapsed. It was actually the fourth time it collapsed, but the first time it actually hit me. Um, I did sustain injuries to my ankle, my foot, and to my spine. Um, I also had to find and pay for accommodations during the holiday season, which is not easy. So, um, most of that had to be put on credit cards. The mold was never remediated prior to COVID. So I had to also contend with asthma and mold allergies. When the pandemic hit, I wasn't able to get treatment for my injuries. My business, um, dropped down to three clients. Um, and then I had none for more than a month. I used my credit cards again to pay for my necessities until I was able to get unemployment. Um, I missed a few payments, and my credit card payments ballooned. All the while, I was paying rent until July to a company that didn't even call to see that I was okay after their ceiling collapsed on me and caused me to lose both income and work. Um, then I just couldn't manage it anymore. So I got COVID in December of two thousand and twenty, and I couldn't work for a month. I went back to work in late January, and I had to leave again in April to have surgery to repair the damage that was done when the ceiling collapsed on my head, um, before COVID. So once again, I'm out of work. They took the elevator out of service in my building two days before surgery. And, um, yeah, I literally had to crawl around my apartment and couldn't leave my apartment. So a rent increase would be an additional unnecessary burden on me. They say you can't get blood out of a stone, but the person that said that has never met Hyam Simkowitz or Eleanor Patrick, because.
Thank you for your testimony.
Rock in a ceiling and drop it on its head, it'll look like it's bleeding.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Uh, David, yeah, before we go to the next, um, speaker, which I promoted, just to give everyone a heads up where we're at. Um, we're now on tenant number thirty-five. Um, we've currently heard for all the owners who have pre-registered that have, um, are in attendance. Uh, so if you are a tenant, um, and your number is thirty-five or greater, um, we will start getting, there's a total of fifty-two tenants that pre-registered. Um, and then after we have gone through the pre-registration list, we'll be opening it up uh, to people who are in attendance who have not registered. Um, and we'll explain how to do that when we get closer. So that's where we stand.
Great. Um, you know, Karina disappeared, Andrew. Excuse me. She was on, but now she's off.
Karina disappeared, okay. All right. I'm promoting Dave. Uh, if Karina comes back, I'll certainly promoter again.
Okay. Uh, Dave Tavolin, um, you're on, you're muted, and your camera is not on, FYI.
Hi, um, I, uh, do the tenant hotline. Yeah, I live in Harlem, one twenty-sixth Street, and, um, I did tenant hotline for Met Council, and some of the stuff I've heard would, um, just radicalize a landlord, well, not a landlord, but, um, I've heard shocking things like people like saying, I don't know what I'm going to do anymore. I've heard old ladies, elderly ladies crying because they don't think they could pay a two percent increase. Um, and this stuff, I mean, if you're talking about data, go look at the DAP portal for any of these landlords who've been testifying and see how many HPD violations, how many complaints they have. It's quite a bit. I have a hundred and sixty in my, two hundred in my little nineteen-unit building. Um, and we're also talking about that there's been a base, like Make the Road in two thousand and eleven estimated about like forty percent of the buildings in like just by neighborhoods in Brooklyn, Queens were overcharges. So we're not talking about the legal rents that they have, and all of my buildings that I've lived in have been overcharged. So I think we need a rent rollback. Jobs are not coming back. I'm looking for jobs, and they're just starting to, and they're not permanent jobs, they're temp jobs. So, um, yeah, and, and just like listen to what people are saying on this hotline. I mean, some of the stuff landlords do is just criminal. And DHR doesn't enforce it, and either is HPG, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I see that Karina is back on, uh, I don't know if your left, is your last name Murray? Karina Murray?
No, it's Karina Popovich. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Uh, well, uh, Karina, welcome, and your cam, I hear you, but your camera is off if you wanted to turn it off.
No, I didn't want that. Um, I, just a little bit of technical difficulties. Um, I don't know how to turn the camera on. I prefer to have it on. Um.
If, if you're on.
I have it on. I have it on.
Okay.
Have it.
There you go.
Hello.
Welcome.
Yes, sorry about the delay. Um, hello, my name is Karina Popovich. I live at one five five West One Sixty-second Street, um, one oh four five two. And my, um, my landlord is NBM Management. I've lived here for eighteen years about. I love my apartment. It's beautiful. I love the way it is, the view, the windows, et cetera, et cetera. The space, the location, I enjoy living here. My friends are close to me. I feel appreciated in my, in my neighborhood. If you raise the rent, a lot of wonderful people will have to pack up and leave, leave this wonderful neighborhood behind a place they enjoy living for such a long time like me. I pay thirty percent to thirty-nine percent. percentage in rent. Over a half of stabilized tenants pay more than 30% of their income in rent. This means that they are rent burdened according to the Office of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. From 2018 to 2019 landlords net operating income revenue remaining after operating expenses are paid grew to 2.9%. The 14th increase in the last 15 years. The average monthly unordered NOI in residential only property citywide as was 499 per unit in 2019. This is directly from the Rent Guidelines Board. Wait, sorry. Per unit per month. I would have to sacrifice food for two people. It would be harder for transportation for work, very little free freedom to live. I lost my job. I had no income. For three months, I had to go to the pantry to get my food. Landlords are saying rent should be increased because of the pandemic. They neglect to say that 20% of landlords who are, were offered back rent from the homes and community renewal rent relief program didn't take the money. Guess they didn't need the money.
Karina, your time is up. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next guest would like to testify in Spanish. It's Teresa Aguilar. If someone can notify him to unmute, he's, he or she is on the phone.
Welcome, Teresa.
Ovan or Liz, can you tell them that they need to unmute? It's star six. Ovan or Liz?
We lost that, we lost the caller. Do you want to promote someone else and then we'll figure out the technical stuff?
Yeah.
I see Lauren Coleman.
Yep.
Lauren, you're muted and your camera's not on FYI.
Hello, I was just waiting until, until it was time to get started. So hold on, I'll take the, I'd rather put my video on my virtual screen. Hey, okay. Man, hear me hopefully, right?
Yes.
I'll be brief. I'm sure everybody's very tired at this point. Thank you so much. So again, my name is Lauren Coleman. I am Executive Director and Founder of a nonprofit here in New York City called Game Change. We support a number of female entrepreneurs of color in a number of different ways. So just two things, I'm hoping that the board can take away this evening from, you know, my small participation here. But according to all the statistics from American Express Small Business Report, the most recent one on women's businesses, women of color absolutely out indexed in terms of entrepreneurship in the United States today. And for many of us, we, we were working from home before it was mandatory and or cool. And so, you know, just listening to that other woman talk about, you know, having a dog walking business and so much more, that's just one of many, many. And so home means so much more to women of color in the city, not just residents, but also residents in business, your complete livelihood. But the other side of that, the number two, is that according to the ACLU, women of color, particularly African American women, out indexed by all demographics for threat of eviction by two times the amount of any other demographic in this country. And so raising rent makes that only more challenging and puts, you know, people who are already very vulnerable at the very front, you know, of that list yet again. So I'm hoping that even though I hear all the owners and their entrepreneurs and I have been an entrepreneur for most of my life and support them, you know, it really is about being able to have something which is affordable and the understanding of that, especially when your home is where you're working from. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Lauren.
You're welcome.
For your testimony. I see our next speaker is Dana Lynn White. Dana Lynn, you're muted and your camera is off.
Okay, I'm here.
I hear you. If you want to put your camera on, you're welcome to.
Oh, I think they only have me in on phone.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm a retired real estate agent. And I am a disabled woman as well. And I speak for the disabled and mentally ill people that we are on a set income. We cannot afford an increase in rent. And for the simple fact that I heard someone speak in regards to the landlord's owners needing the increase so they could repair and maintain the properties for us tenants when we have the majority of owners who don't reside in the state that they live in and they are raising the rent and they are not putting the money back into the properties. We have tons of slum lords and we have so many of us who are on set incomes, even those who are working minimum wage with children, single parents, and we can't even make ends meet, let alone the COVID hitting us. My money is more than 75% of my income that goes towards my rent. And to have having to go to the doctors three times a week, I gotta pay for medical, I gotta pay for the bills, I gotta pay for transportation. And then I had to pay for the extra things that we needed because of the COVID. The mask I had, the PPE I had purchased myself and a lot of us, we had. They sent us one or two, but that doesn't equate for the whole year, let alone we are still in the COVID. This is this is a lot for a lot of us tenants. And the owners, I'm just behooved. I understand that they gotta keep the properties up and stuff like that, but there's a lot of them are not even putting the money back into their properties. And I just can't I just thank you for the time to be able to explain some of it.
Thank you, Dana Lynn. Our next speaker is Nikita Salehi. Is that right?
Yes, that's right. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Hi, everyone. My name is Nikita Salehi. I'm a staff attorney at DC37 Municipal Employers Legal Services. I work in the housing unit and DC37 Mills supports a 0% increase with regard to rent for one year and two year leases in rent stabilized apartments. DC37 is the largest union in the city of New York, representing 150,000 employees and 50,000 retirees. Our members safely guide your children across the street. They assist you at your library's reference desk. They are the gardeners in our parks. The public sees them at the Metropolitan Museum of Art. The members of DC37 make NYC function on a daily basis, even during this pandemic. Thus, as you can already imagine, because they're on the front lines and make the city what it is, they've also been the ones to be the most severely impacted as a result of the pandemic. To provide some background on my experience, DC37 Mills is a legal services benefit of the union. And like I said, I work as a staff attorney. More than half of my clients reside in rent stabilized apartments. Their average rent burden takes 30, 50% or more of their monthly take home pay. Just to list a few examples of our clients' finances. One of my clients works as a school aide for the Department of Education and her take home pay is $800 biweekly. Furthermore, she has no other income coming into the home as her husband contracted COVID-19 and was forced to take unpaid leave from his job, leaving her to pay $1,200 a month in rent by herself. Another one of my clients is a single mother and takes home 1,048 biweekly and has to cover the costs of childcare since her 11-year-old son switched to remote learning during the pandemic, all while trying to meet $1,050 a month in rent. The pandemic has transformed their lives, a daily struggle into a hopeless nightmare. Furthermore, the current state of the law appears to already sanction legally registered rental amounts as long as the lease also includes a legal rent. And thus, that's why we support a zero, a zero increase. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Nikita.
Thank you for testifying. We always love having legal services. Thank you for having me.
And I think this is Teresa, is that correct?
Teresa is back, yes.
Yes.
And to unmute, yes, it's star six.
Welcome. Bienvenida.
Ah, gracias. Hola.
Hello.
Buenas tardes a la junta de regulaciones.
We welcome your testimony.
A todos en general. Yo soy Teresa Aguilar y me reunía aquí con ustedes en representación de nuestra organización uno, formada por miembros de recursos limitados en el norte de Brooklyn. Y luchamos en defensa de nuestras comunidades en contra de los desplazamientos y otros hechos en contra de los inclinos. Por eso estoy aquí para pedir a la honorable junta que no haga ningún aumento en las rentas, ya que un aumento ahora después de esta espantosa pandemia sería continuar con otra horrorosa, horrorosa injusticia e injusta pandemia de desalojos el consiguiente y sufriendo sin fin las familias. Gracias por su atención.
Thank you.
And David, if I could just say something real quick?
Sure.
We have just a few more speakers left. We have more speakers who have pre-registered, but I'm not finding them on the list. So just in case you have signed in or called in from a number or name that's different than what you registered, I just want to quickly go through the people that we cannot locate. And if you hear yourself on this list, you need to leave Zoom, come back in with your full name so that we can find you or call back on the phone with the phone number that you registered with. So I'm just gonna go through that really quickly. I'm gonna go through the people on the telephone first. We have owner number one with the initials SB, owner number 11 with the initials HC, tenant number 15 with the initials JR, tenant number 19 with the initials LC, owner number 22 with the initial CG, owner number 27 with the initials MA, tenant number 46 with the initials MS, tenant number 50 with the initials KL, and tenant number 52 with the initials DM. Those people all registered to speak on the telephone. People who registered to speak on video who we have not been able to locate include owner nine with the initials DE, owner 10 with the initials AW, tenant 11 with the initials JG, tenant 12 with the initials GG, owner 23, three initials MDS, owner 24 with the initials JL, tenant 36 with the initials GG, tenant 37 with the initials, three initials, NRR, tenant 41 with the initials JH, tenant 45 with the initials DG, tenant 47 with the initial CA, and tenant 51 with the initials MW. That'll be our last announcement because we are almost out of speakers. You also will have the option, as we'll explain, to speak as an unregistered speaker technically, and we'll explain that when we're done with the registered speakers. Thank you.
I believe, thank you Danielle. I believe our next speaker is Noah Weston. Welcome, Noah.
I thank you very much. So I'm here in support of neighbors, helping neighbors, Muslim member of South Brooklyn DSA. Now, one thing that I think is universally agreeable is that without secure housing, community is not possible. And, you know, we all want community and that trust and support that it's founded on. It can't really be made if people are getting kicked out of their homes or priced out. I know my neighbors. I've seen their kids grow up. And let's, you know, compare that to what landlords are allegedly facing if they don't get a rent increase. They're hitting us all these percentages and figures in the vacuum. And honestly, until they're willing to all show us their financials and make their entire portfolio publicly and easily available online, the case they're making is not credible. They are operating in a state of opacity and that should be dismissed. And they also can't invoke past repairs because all these things they're talking about, these costs, a lot of them are not new problems. They let them deteriorate in the first place. They can't use their past neglect to hold New York hostage for their present costs. It's just absolutely immoral and they can absorb these costs. They're wielding the language of economic hardship, but that doesn't mean that they experience it the same way the tenants do. Learn how to budget like the rest of us. Sell things, sell buildings. You own buildings. Chris Athenios, who spoke earlier, owns nine of them. Andrew Latzko has several buildings he inherited. I wish I inherited any buildings, you know, or get a different job. No one forced you into this wretched business. Those who are smaller landlords, people like Leslie spoke earlier, you should get targeted relief, bailouts, not loans. You know, and but, you know, blanket rent increase hurts way many more people than you and it hurts them more than the pain you're experiencing right now. So that's just not fair. Now Gregory Bronner, another owner, said something very telling earlier. He said that he'd rather help his ailing family than subsidize tenants as if the tenants themselves don't have similar or worse struggles. If the material burdens he bears are not only comparable, but a greater priority than that of his tenants. You're all not plumbers, you're not lumber mills, you're landlords. And if you won't sustain a rent freeze, especially under these conditions people are in right now, you shouldn't, you should not be the steward of this universal necessity. Sorry.
Thank you, Noah. And then I believe our next speaker is Sia Hegday. Is that correct?
It is. Thank you so much. Yes, good evening. My name is Sia Hegday and I testify today in my role as Housing Policy Counsel with the Bronx Defender Civil Action Practice. The Bronx Defenders holistically defends Bronx residents from the enmeshed civil, immigration, family, and criminal penalties of multilegal system contact. As civil public defenders, we also serve as right to counsel providers and as such, advocate for low income renters who face imminent risk of eviction in Bronx Housing Court. Many of our clients in the South Bronx live in rent burdened households on a fixed income and public assistance. They mostly identify as black, brown, and Latinx and have continued to experience insurmountable financial challenges during the COVID-19 pandemic. Chief among these challenges have been their lost wages from job terminations and occupational license suspensions, reductions in cash assistance and food stamps, loss of financial support from their loved ones in the community, and mounting medical expenses. We have also witnessed frequent fear mongering and harassment by our clients landlords who have threatened them with eviction actions, failed to make repairs, and illegally displaced them from their homes. The consequences of these circumstances have compromised our client's safety net, hampered their ability to pay rent, and infringed on their human right to housing. As rent regulated housing in New York City arose from the critical need to combat its longstanding homelessness and affordability crisis, the Rent Guidelines Board must ensure that the most vulnerable among us have equitable access to housing. We demand that the board mandate a rent freeze such that rent burdened, rent stabilized households who must pay over 30% of their income toward rent in the absence of local or federally funded housing subsidies can support their other basic needs. In enhancing and extending the eviction moratorium, our state legislature has expressly signaled its intent to avoid as many evictions as possible, but this moratorium will not be enough if there is a rent increase upon its expiration. While landlords will have profited from the current rental assistance program, our clients and the tens of thousands like them in the city must not resuffer the homelessness crisis while recuperating from the devastating economic turmoil that this pandemic has caused. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony.
So I believe, I'll check with Danielle, but I believe we're at the end of our list of people who have pre-registered.
I just, I just sent you a chat. If you could check the chat.
Oh, okay. Let me check the chat. Checking the chat. Oh, okay. There's one that we're trying to identify. So we will, we'll be able to, if that's who we think it is, we'll put her up. The, just a few announcements before we go on how we were going to do that. I just want to say that registration for our next public hearing, which is June 17, that's Thursday. Registration will close at noon tomorrow for that hearing. We are planning on taking unregistered speakers at the end of the hearing as well as time permits. So I just wanted to make that announcement. So I just wanted to make that announcement. And I guess, I think it's worth one more time for those who are in, that may be on this call who are Spanish-speaking, that they can dial into our, our meeting for those who want to listen to simultaneous Spanish translations. So I'm not sure, Liz, are you still?
I'm here. I can actually let them.
Oh, okay. So maybe instead of me reading in English, why don't you just go ahead and read it in Spanish? Because the announcement is basically geared to those who are maybe on this call who are, do not understand English or their native language is Spanish.
Sure, sure.
Como recordatorio, les queríamos acordar que si no se inscribió o desea inscribirse para la próxima audiencia pública, que será este jueves, tendrá hasta mañana para hacerlo de nueve a cinco de la tarde. Por favor, tendría que llamar a nuestra oficina. Y para poder hacer eso, un segundo acá.
Is we leaving Solven?
No, I'm here. I'm sorry. I was just trying to find the number where they would need to call in order to register for the next public hearing. That was actually in the original.
It's not on the main announcements. It was on the periodic announcements?
Correct. Okay. I see. And I'm looking for that number here.
If they want to register for the next hearing, is that what you're saying?
Yes, correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. So you need to call 212-669-7480.
Seven four eight zero.
Para todos los que deseen apuntarse para la próxima audiencia pública, que será el jueves, por favor, llamen al siguiente número mañana, el 212-669-7480. De nuevo, el número es 212-669-7480. Y de nuevo, si está escuchando la interpretación al español por teléfono y piensa declarar durante las audiencias, tendrá que pasar al seminario web principal para hacerlo. Y acá los intérpretes de la audiencia principal traducirán su testimonio para la junta. Antes de que sea su turno de hablar, por favor, llame al 646-558-8656. De nuevo, el número es 646-558-8656. Y luego ingrese el número de identificación de la reunión. En este caso sería el 83877223517. Y cuando se le solicite el número de identificación de participante, presione la tecla de numeración y luego cuando se lo solicite, ingrese la contraseña 403700. De nuevo, la contraseña es 403700. Muchísimas gracias.
Just to confirm, Andrew, you said that folks can register until tomorrow at noon, right? Not until five?
Right. It's been noon all along. Yeah.
Yeah, the announcement that Owen read said nine to five.
Oh, it should be noon.
Tienen hasta las doce del mediodía mañana para apuntarse para la próxima, para la próxima declaración pública, para la próxima audiencia pública, para mañana a las doce del día. Gracias.
Thank you. So we believe that this person is the one that we identified. So we're going to promote Meg as a panelist.
Meg, welcome. You're muted. Oh, there you go. And we see you too.
Hi, I'm so sorry about that. I thought I had properly changed my display name. First of all, thank you to everyone on the board for sticking through this meeting and for all of the work you do and to all of the tenants that have spoken. My name is Megan White. I'm a staff attorney at an organization called Mobilization for Justice. I'm also a member of the Legal Services Staff Association 2320, which is a wall-to-wall union that's made up of attorneys, paralegals, and other advocates. And the majority of the work that we do is in housing. You know, I've sat through most of this meeting today and, you know, I understand the concerns of the landlords that spoke, but I want to speak to some things that they haven't discussed. First, that ERAP is available to landlords. They can apply on their tenant's behalf and seek all of the back rent for the last 12 months and three months' prospective rent. So that's just a falsehood that's been sort of perpetrated throughout this hearing. I also want to talk about the expense of evicting someone. You know, my colleagues that are here, I see a few familiar faces. With an increase in rent, folks can't afford rent right now. A rent increase would just further burden tenants and would ultimately lead to more eviction proceedings, which would cost landlords in the long run. You know, I heard a lot of landlords talk about their inability to rent out units, how no one is coming back to the city. A rent increase would simply make more units vacant, would force more people onto the street and would ultimately cost landlords more money than I think that they understand that they would receive if there was an increase. So, you know, for those reasons, I'm urging the board to vote for a rent freeze. And again, I thank you all for the work that you do. And I hope that you freeze the rent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Andrew, that was our last registered speaker, correct?
Let me just double-check the last. Yes. That, the last registered, that's in attendance, that we know. Okay. So before we explain how we're gonna do this, it's very simple. But we are gonna hear from people who have not spoken at this hearing. We have attendees who have been listening and sticking with us and we appreciate that. But if you've already spoken, you've had this chance at this hearing. So we are going to be selecting. So if we recognize your name, we're going to skip over and go to the next person that has yet not spoken. So I think consecutively we'll do this, Owen, as I read it. So for those who didn't have a chance to register in advance, we have some time remaining for additional testimony.
Para aquellos que no tuvieron la oportunidad de inscribirse con anticipación, nos queda algo de tiempo para testimonios adicionales.
If you would like to testify, please raise your hand to signal your wish to speak.
Si desea declarar, por favor, levante la mano para indicarnos que desea declarar.
If you're on a desktop computer, click Raise Hand in the webinar controls.
En una computadora, por favor, haga clic en Raise Hand o levante la mano en los controles del seminario web.
And or press Alt plus Y on Windows.
O presione Alt Y en Windows.
Or Option Y on a Mac.
U, opción más Y mayúscula, en una computadora Mac.
If you're on a smartphone, tap Raise Hand in the webinar controls.
Si se encuentra en un teléfono inteligente, por favor, haga clic en Raise Hand o levante la mano en los controles del seminario web.
And for those joining by telephone, press star nine. And then. I'm sorry. Press star nine to raise your hand and to lower your hand, it's again star nine.
Y para aquellos que se hayan unido a nosotros por teléfono, por favor, presione asterisco nueve y luego para nuevamente bajar la mano, tiene que también presionar asterisco número nueve.
And so when you are promoted, if you can please remember to limit your testimony to two minutes and if you could please state your name.
Y de nuevo, por favor, cuando le llamemos y se le haga la invitación, le pedimos que declare, pero que, por favor, se mantenga dentro de los dos minutos para hacer su declaración. Gracias.
Okay. Great. So we have one taker so far. Feel free to raise your hands. I'm going to allow this. This is for someone on the telephone. I'm gonna allow them to talk. And they will need to, it's star six to unmute. You may have to say that in Spanish, Owen. I don't know if they.
Sure, sure. Por favor, si se encuentra ahora listo para declarar, tiene que presionar la estrella seis para poder activar el micrófono en su teléfono móvil. La persona que esté ahora lista para declarar.
Welcome.
Bienvenido.
You're unmuted, so we should be able to hear you.
Le escuchamos. Si activó su micrófono, puede hablar, puede empezar a hablar, por favor.
If your phone number ends 305, it's your chance to testify.
Si su teléfono termina en tres cero cinco, es su hora de declarar, por favor. Puede declarar.
So we can't hear you. If you're speaking, we can't hear you. You're unmuted, but we can't hear you speaking.
Si está hablando, no le escuchamos. Su micrófono está activado, pero aún así no le escuchamos.
Andrew, any suggestions? Just so you know, we still can't hear you if you're speaking.
Right. So I suggest we go to our next speaker and then we'll come back.
Okay. So if your phone number ends in 305, we're gonna come back to you. We just can't hear you, so we're gonna try somebody else.
Si su teléfono termina en tres cero cinco, volveremos a usted dentro de poco porque no le escuchamos, vamos a intentar con otra persona y luego intentaremos con usted.
So we just promoted Maritza.
Maritza, ¿se encuentra usted?
Andrew, I don't see Maritza.
Maritza, you can accept being a panelist?
Maritza, ¿podría usted aceptar ser panelista para que pueda declarar?
Andrew, maybe we should just allow her to talk?
Yeah, allow her to talk.
There she is. We see you are promoted, but you're muted and we don't see your video if you want to turn that on.
Si desea hablar. Adelante, su micrófono está activado.
Maritza, you're still muted.
Maritza, aún está desactivado su micrófono.
Does the person start with three zero five? Can they speak? I thought I saw you speak for a second.
La persona cuyo teléfono termina en tres cero cinco puede hablar. Pensé haberlo visto hablar unos segundos. ¿Puede hablar?
No, we still can't hear you three oh five. Maritza, if you can unmute, then we would hear from you.
Aún no le escuchamos tres o cinco, pero Maritza, si usted está ahí, por favor, hable. ¿Puede hablar?
Just again, it's star six to unmute yourself and mute yourself.
From the telephone.
De nuevo, tiene que presionar estrella seis para activar o desactivar el micrófono en su teléfono móvil, por favor. Estrella seis o asterisco seis.
Well, the person on the telephone just muted themselves again. And Maritza is on video. There should be a control. I don't know if she's on a phone or on a computer, but she needs to unmute herself and then the person on telephone number three oh five, they muted themselves again.
La persona cuyo teléfono termina en tres cero cinco volvió a desactivar su micrófono y Maritza, usted también tendría que activar su cámara, si puede, o su micrófono.
So the person on the telephone needs to hit star six again, is that correct?
Correct.
De nuevo, la persona cuyo teléfono termina en tres cero cinco tiene que activar el teléfono o el micrófono, mejor dicho, con asterisco seis, por favor.
Andrew, do you want to promote somebody else as people try to figure out the technology?
Currently, we don't have any else.
Okay.
Anybody else with their hand raised.
Just so that I can confirm, what we're asking people who are on the line who would like to testify is just to raise their hand and you guys will promote them so that they can give testimony.
Correct, Amanda.
Okay. I'll just email the coalition so that folks can let folks know.
Maritza. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No worries. De nuevo, si desean hablar, tienen que levantar la mano para que la junta sepa y pueda promover su estatus a un declarante acá en la junta.
Maritza, I'm not sure what technology you're using, but on my Zoom, if there's a mute button in the bottom left and you want to click it if it has like a red line through it so that you can speak.
Maritza, no sé qué tipo de tecnología usted esté usando, pero si está usando Zoom en un teléfono o en un dispositivo electrónico, debe buscar lo que dice mute o mudo, activar eso para que su micrófono funcione.
And the person whose phone number ends three oh five, you're now unmuted. So we should be able to hear you if you speak into the phone, is my understanding.
Y la persona cuyo teléfono termina en tres cero cinco está activado su micrófono actualmente, así que puede hablar libremente, simplemente tendría que subir el volumen para que le podamos escuchar. ¿Puede hablar?
If she's on a smartphone, it should be. Is it, you click more to unmute?
No, I think it's on the main screen.
It is on the main screen. Okay.
I'm not sure what else we should do. Shayla, any thoughts?
Did you hear back at all, Shayla?
Of, I know for sure Basilio, who has been waiting, wants to testify, but I don't know how to communicate to individual folks that they should be raising their hands because that seems like a upgrade that people have not interacted with on Zoom. Basilio, sé que usted específicamente estaba interesado de testificar. Si quiere testificar, tiene que arzar la mano, dándole la estrella en su teléfono y el número nueve, ya que me habían dicho anteriormente que usted quería testificar. We did send an email out to the coalition to like let folks know that what they can do if they are trying to testify tonight.
If you know that Basilio definitely wants to talk, we can just promote him.
Is he an attendee, Shayla?
Yes.
Yeah, he's been on since the beginning.
I'm gonna promote and then we'll, I guess.
I'm sorry, is it star six or star nine?
Basilio is on video, so.
Oh, but I think it's star six for the telephone though. To unmute. Okay, okay. So it's star six. Okay. I see Basilio. He is muted. So Basilio, if you want to unmute.
You hear me now?
Yes. So this is, Basilio, hold on a second. A person with phone number ending three oh five, can you tell us your name?
My name, Basilio Garcia is my name.
Oh, Basilio. Oh, wait. Basilio, hold on one second.
All right.
Who's, who's on phone number ending three oh five? Who is that?
La persona cuyo teléfono es tres cero cinco, ¿se podría identificar, por favor? ¿Cuál es su nombre?
All right. I heard some noise. Maybe let's just go to Basilio. I'm not sure about three oh five yet.
No, that only.
Yeah. Basilio, your turn to testify now.
Basilio, adelante, puede declarar.
Bueno. Mis testimonios entendemos, entendemos perfectamente que la crisis de la pandemia del COVID-17 ha traído muchas muertes y a pesar de que ha traído muchas muertes, hay personas que se han sido desplazadas de sus trabajos, han sido desplazadas de sus viviendas porque no han podido pagar la renta. Y yo le pido de favor a la junta R G B que haga algo por esta pobre gente que están casi ya con un temor de que los desalojen y los tiren a la calle. Vamos a tener más hombres en la calle y no es posible ni es permitido que esto suceda con el ser humano. Tenemos que ponernos la mano en el corazón para evitar esto. No se tiren la pelota, el uno al otro y el alcalde se la tira para atrás a ustedes. El alcalde también tiene que comprender que como él ya se va, él no le interesa lo que le pase a los inquilinos de la gran ciudad de Nueva York, de esta gran ciudad. Yo le pido a la R G B que haga algo, que se ponga su mano en el corazón y haga algo para evitar que esto suceda. Si es posible, hay que frisar la renta. Hay que frisarla. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony. Um, so the person whose phone number ends three oh five, your sound keeps coming on, but we don't hear your voice at all.
De nuevo, la persona con el teléfono tres cero cinco, que finaliza con tres cero cinco. Vemos que se activa el sonido, pero no le escuchamos la voz.
Can you try speaking into your phone?
¿Puede dirigirse al teléfono y hablar en voz alta para ver si le escuchamos?
Okay. And Maritza, Maritza, you're still muted. So we wouldn't be able to hear you if you're speaking. Can you unmute?
Maritza, aún tiene su micrófono desactivado. No le podríamos escuchar, pero si activa su micrófono, tal vez le podamos escuchar. Podría ser eso ahora, activar su micrófono.
Ahí, ¿me escuchas?
Hello, yes, we can.
Sí, le escuchamos ahora.
Yes, we do.
Bueno, perfecto.
Bueno, perfecto. Mi nombre es Marta Puente. Vivo en la 9425 de la 57 Avenida, Elmus, Nueva York. Nosotros hace dos años, el antiguo dueño del edificio se lo vendió a un consocio que se llama Zara Reality, y se ha portado muy mal con todas las personas que han tenido atraso en su renta. Desafortunadamente, muchos hemos tenido la pandemia, hemos sufrido la pandemia, ya que personalmente mi esposo y yo padecimos de COVID-19 el año pasado. Ya tenemos las vacunas, pero él es independiente y no recibía ni unemployment, ni nada. Yo trabajo como maestra de niños especiales, pero por la pandemia, muchos de los sitios donde yo trabajaba los cerraron. Llevamos más de un año sin poder trabajar y solamente recibiendo parte del dinero que nos ha enviado el Washington, el presidente Biden, pero no tenemos dinero para pagar la renta. Entonces considero que esto no se trata solamente de que pidamos ayuda, porque nosotros siempre, desde que vivimos en este país, hemos pagado impuestos, impuestos altos, porque hemos trabajado. Pero con esto de la pandemia, que nos enfermamos, nos ha sido imposible. Yo trabajo en la junta del edificio para ayudar a personas que no tienen recursos, que necesitan ayuda, y lo más importante, no pueden subirle a la renta. Gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for your testimony.
Gracias por su testimonio, señora. Okay.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Maritza, you're still muted.
Maritza, usted.
Andrew, is Maritza really our last person? You're muted, Andrew.
Yes, that is all that is. Other than Maritza, that's it. So once again, if folks do want to testify our next public hearing, June 17th, if they pre-register June 16th tomorrow by noon, but you're welcome to come back and to the next hearing, and time permitting, we can hear unregistered speakers as well.
Yes, and Maritza, let me just say this, because there's apparently some technological difficulties. We're also taking comments on the proposed guidelines outside of these public hearings. You can submit testimony to the RGB no later than this Thursday, June 17th, and you can find information on submitting testimony on their website, which is nyc.gov/rgb, or you can leave audio testimony by calling 929-256-5472. That's 929-256-5472. I'm sorry that we couldn't overcome that technological problem, but you still have the opportunity to testify that way.
Can you make us a suggestion on the YouTube page? Andrew, I don't know if this is possible, but if we could actually add the Zoom meeting so that folks who are watching on YouTube can click on it and find them way back to the Zoom.
That's a question from my esteemed colleague, Brian Overman, who I think we can. I don't know. He tells a lot. But that's a great idea. If we can do that, we certainly will. Yes, I am adding it now.
Great.
I'll add it for Thursday. I can hear the clicking.
So that is all of our testimony. I would like to say thank you to everyone who testified. It helps us to make our decision. It adds a lot of qualitative understanding of what tenants and owners are facing to complement the quantitative analysis that the staff provides to the board members. So on behalf of all the board members, I say thank you to those who have testified. I don't believe we have any other business, so I will welcome a motion to adjourn in a second.
Second.
Did I, I got a second from Christina, but did I hear a motion to adjourn?
Sorry.
Cecilia gives us a motion, and Christina has seconded the motion. So thanks to everyone who spent the afternoon and the evening with us, and I look forward to continuing hearing testimony on Thursday. Thank you all, and particularly thank you to Andrew and Brian and Danielle and Charmaine for making this quite a seamless virtual hearing. Thank you so much.